Good morning and welcome to our Pitt County Board of Commissioners Budget Workshop, day one. And welcome to all of you in the audience and those of you by way of television or other social media. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'd like to have our roll called. Those who are present, please let it be known by raising your right hand. Understand that Commissioner Owens is running a little late due to some court issues. At this time, we should have our invocation and pledge, our invocation by Commissioner Garrish and our pledge by Commissioner Foley.
Let's all stand, please. Let's pray. Father, we thank you again for the opportunity of serving you. We thank you, Father, for the opportunity of serving our county. We thank you for our great county and for the many blessings that you bestow upon us each and every day. Now, Father, we pray that you might be with us as we start this week of budget workshops. Father, there are many issues. Help us to be able to discuss those issues objectively and make the decisions that would be the best for the citizens that we represent. Thanks, by saints, we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Please face our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion for the approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
You can take mine as a second.
Has been moved and properly seconded. If we approve the agenda, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Very good. The agenda is approved. Before we get started as procedure, normally we have the manager and our finance director, if needed, to present and then we would ask questions at the end. And if that's agreeable among all of you, we'll use that same format. At this time, we'd like to turn the presentation now over to our manager, Scott.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure once again to present to you the proposed operating budget for the following fiscal year. And before you, you've got two sets of information. One, you've got a copy of the PowerPoint printed out that'll also be on the screens. You also, as normal, you have a three-ring binder and I'll cross-reference the slides from the PowerPoint over to the three-ring binder. The illustrations in the binder are in larger print and easier to read and decipher and to basically just to look at. Obviously, we're here to discuss and look at the proposed budget for the next fiscal year, for fiscal year 1718, that will begin on July 1. And wanted just real quickly, obviously, you have the agenda for today and then also in the three-ring binder is the agenda for the following days as well as the different agencies come before you to present their requests and needs. So I guess going to page two in the binder itself are the different mission, vision, and value statements for the county. And as the board is well aware, the vision statement is to be a leader in the state and the best in the east. And we try to shoot for that goal. And I think the majority of the time, we are, we're definitely a leader in the state and the far majority of the time to be the best in the east. Our mission enhances the health, safety, and well-being of our community by advocating and providing for quality services in a friendly, cost-efficient, and cost-effective manner. That is our goal in what we try to do. On the next slide, in terms of your priorities, we, on page two, there's longer statements. We just reduced these down to bulleted statements. Number one, education is and has been the board of commissioners' number one priority. Public safety follows. Economic development, human services. In human services, we're talking about health, mental health, DSS-type services. The next facility and space needs, infrastructure improvements, and then recreational activities. In terms of the next slide, the guiding principles in terms of developing the budget before you, the requests that come, that are submitted, we evaluate those against your goals and priorities. We're continuing to work with the principle of the base budget, looking at what we have in the past and then moving forward from it. We are maintaining service levels with limited expansion. There's not a whole lot of growth for expansion in, with the revenue resources. And we have a consideration of structural balance. In the past, I think we said that we maintained or we adhered to structural balance. But the whole principle of structural balance, as we came out of the recession, was that we would only expand the budget if we had revenue sources that were of a reoccurring nature that were, tell me, Dwayne.
Recurring revenues.
Recurring, not reoccurring, i.e. fund balance. And the last principle, conservative revenue projections at or below appropriations. Revenue drivers, we've had about a little less than 3%, a 2.68% estimated increase in our ad valorem tax base. That's based upon a 99% collection rate. That doesn't sound like a lot in terms of percentage, but when you apply that against a $12 billion tax base, that has yielded some, the equivalent is about $330 million of actual taxable property that's been added to the tax base. We were, I think probably a year or two ago, probably a percent less than that. Pre-recession, we were probably 4% to 5% growing when the economy was really taking off. So we're definitely in the new normal and this is a normal that's, it's good. It's not great, but it's very good in terms of the growth in the tax base. Another revenue driver will be the continuation of the $4 million fund balance plug as we have in the current year we're standing in. That has been put in the budget for next year and we'll discuss that as we go along. We have a 2.75%, 2.75% projected increase in sales taxes of revenue. We have conservative revenue projections at or below appropriations. We have, as I discussed or mentioned at the last regular board meeting, increasing the ABC board revenues from 1.3 million to 1.4 million, that's a $100,000 increase. And we continue to leverage federal and state revenues in human services. In terms of the next slide, the expenditure drivers, we have a 2% market adjustment built into this budget. The actual CPI, January over January, was 2.5%. We started with 2.5%, but just didn't have the revenues to fund that. We continue to pay for performance merit system that's driven through what we call the PEP process, the Partners for Effective Performance, which is the written performance appraisal plan that's done on each and every employee. This budget also includes a 2% increase in current funding for Pitt County Schools, Pitt Community College, Shepherd Memorial Library, and the Council on Aging. Another expenditure driver are the cell tower leases for the radio project. In terms of all the money we've had to spend to expand and enhance the radio project, all of the capital side of it, all the debt service, we've covered. We've covered it with the trillion dollars, with other freedom capacity, but there's not enough dollars in all that to cover the actual, the tower leases, the American Tower Corporation leases that we have, you've approved. And you'll see dollars in there for that. There's a vehicle loan proposal in here for the sheriff's office and it's above and beyond what we normally do. We'll go into details on that later in the budget. That's, just note that is a driver. And then the last driver we note is within the 911 CAD implementation where we've gone from using an in-house program, the MIS had written, we're now using an outside package. It's had an effect on the MIS budget in terms of their ability to, both the MIS and, 911 and MIS, in terms of being able to cost allocate some of their services, their costs. All right, moving to page three in the binder. So the recommended overall budget for next year is a little less than a quarter of a billion dollars, $245,441,225. It recommends keeping the tax rate at 68.6 cents, which is the current rate that you established last year through reevaluation. On the chart you have in the binder on page three, just a number of things. The overall increase in all funds within the budget. And when we talk about the county budget, we can talk about all the funds in the budget, for the entire budget, and that's that $245 million figure, or we can talk about the general fund. The general fund, which is within, I'm gonna say, all funds, is that portion of the budget that drives what the tax rate will be. And we'll talk about the general fund. But overall, the bottom right-hand corner shows that the overall budget is growing by 3.51%. And then you can see in the left-hand column, the different components of all funds, whether it's general funds, special revenue funds, capital projects, and so forth, going down the list. On the next slide, the budget highlights, again, increases funding, current expense funding for the school system, the community college maintains a tax rate. We do have a net increase of six FTEs, full-time equivalent positions, the 2% market adjustment. And it also continues the compensation adjustments for law enforcement that were put into place last year. It's kind of a driver, but also a budget highlight because that was a large increase in last year's, in the current year's budget. On the next slide, in terms of the all funds overview, the adopted budget last year for July 1 was a little over $237 million. This budget is $245 million, again, a 3.51% increase. Moving to page four in the binder, now we're looking at the general fund. And again, the general fund is that fund that really establishes and drives what the tax rate should be set at. The original request by all the departments was $180,244,740. In terms of having to reduce those requests down to the available revenues, Dwayne Holder and myself and his, our team, reduced the budget by about $6.2 million of expansion requests. A lot of folks say, well, you cut me, you cut me, you cut me. We said, well, we really did cut what you, your base budget, what we cut was, was the expansion or kind of how you inflated, you know, the expansion of what you're asking for in the new year. So the, within the general fund, the proposed budget is $174,61,050. The projected revenues, again, continue the $4 million fund balance plug that we have in this year's budget. And you might look in the paper and you say, well, but right now, the fund balance plug is 5.1 million. But that also, I believe, Dwayne, correct me if I'm wrong, that includes the appropriations for the 911 backup center.
Correct, some one-time items.
Right, that was a one-time item. So the $4 million plug is still the focus, so the conversation. The tax rate within the general fund is a little bit less than 68.6% because remember, .7 cents goes to the Development Commission for Economic Development purposes. So percent change within the general fund is 3.48%. That's just a little bit less than the 3.51, which was the increase for all the total funds. You might say, well, what other funds are there? Well, obviously, you have your 20 volunteer fire departments that has, you have your fire fund, you have your EMS fund, so there's a number of different funds as I was listing on the other page. All right. Moving on, page five in the binder, looking at revenues. Pie chart here just illustrates the revenue resources for all funds within the budget, that whole $245 million. And you can see your largest revenue source comes from ad valorem taxes, almost 48%. Second largest is intergovernmental, a little less, a little greater than 19, and then other taxes is your third. And then you can see on the next slide how that's broken out, again, illustrated on page three in the binder. On the next slide, go back one. Yeah, revenue, all funds, again, showing the $245 million as it's all split out. Okay, next slide. The ad valorem tax rate, again, recommended at 68.6, recommend holding the rate. The proposed distribution, just talked about that portion that goes to general fund, that portion that goes to the Development Commission. And this is where we, this next part of the slide is where we talk about the tax base. Last year, the tax base was about $12.3 billion. We've grown to about $12.6, I guess if you truly rounded that off, be $12.7 billion. So we've had $329 million, almost $330 million of increase equating to that 2.68% growth in our taxable property within Pitt County. Page seven in the binder is here just for reference only. It shows, this is a traditional table we put in the binder. First column shows, based upon the proposed rate, the amount of taxes that come in. And then the next three columns shows that if the board was considering a tax increase, what a penny would bring in, two pennies, three pennies. And then it also shows the effect on a house valuing anywhere from $75,000 to $200,000. And then again, very bottom, it shows the total base and the distribution. Moving on to the next slide. This corresponds to page eight in the binder. You can see it a little bit larger. I want to give you a tax rate history going all the way back to the turn of the century. It sounds like a long time ago when you use those terms, but going back to the year 2000 to current. And you can see that the rate has really held constant anywhere between 66.5 cents to 70 cents. The county government as an organization has really, has held that rate through the years. And typically, the only time the rate has changed is at or near a reevaluation year. We really, you as a board have not changed the rate, for the most part, outside of a revale year. There's maybe one exception on there or so, but typically, it is within a revale year. Next revale will be 2020 and we'll actually be gearing up for that, I think, starting in 18, 19, because then it's effective in '20, the first of, the budget for 2021. And the next slide, in terms of sales taxes of revenue, I mentioned that we had increased the projections at 2.75%. You can see how, what that does in terms of the different articles that we benefit from, Article 39, 40, and 42. And you can see that the dollar values as they increase on those revenue sources. Page nine in the binder basically gives a breakout of the revenues within the general fund. Again, that driver of the tax rate, everything from ad valorem taxes to sales taxes to fund balance to investment earnings to, you name it, it's all illustrated in that chart. All right, on page 10 in your binder, in terms of proposed fee changes for the new year, as you recall, last year, the Animal Services Advisory Board had recommended that the municipal intake fee at the animal shelter be increased until it was fully loaded. Last year, we went from $20 to $40, which is, $40 is effective in this current year's budget. They recommended in year two to go from 40 to 80. And then in year three, you see the footnote, the fully loaded cost is $90.91 based upon a 2015 fully loaded cost. The goal of the animal services and staff is to have the municipal intake fee actually pay the actual cost of that animal coming into the shelter and being handled. The municipalities have been written, I've written them a letter letting them know that this was the plan and that they needed to budget for accordingly and to just be aware of that. Have not heard from them. It's probably been a week and a half, maybe two weeks since that letter went out. The next item on the proposed fee increases would be for environmental health. In terms of existing septic system, for inspection or reuse of the system, they would like it to go from $50 to $70. The third thing with the fee change schedule, again, environmental health, would like to, in terms to replace a valid improvement permit. There's two caveats to this. One, a system revision without site visit currently is $50. They want to remove that. And then they want to have a system revision with site visit from, what, current fee is $100 to proposed fee $100. And Dwayne or staff, what is the change on that? It's going from $100 to $100.
Yeah, because of the site visit, the removal of the site. They have to have a site visit.
All right. The fourth thing on the, in the chart in the binder, but it's not going to be on the slide, will be within our Office of Public Information, in terms of the cable television, the franchise fee application that we used to charge, it was $6,000 for 5% of gross revenue. We would like, or actually, it was $6,000 for the fee and then the quarterly franchise fee was 5% of gross revenue. We'd like to remove both of those because we no longer issue cable franchises. So there's no need to have that in the table. All right, now we get into fund balance. Page 11 in the binder, we'll come to this in a moment, but the comments on the screen and then the PowerPoint presentation, obviously, the fund balance is the county's savings account, operating reserve. We need savings beyond the statutory requirement of 8.33% for cash flow. When the county sends out the tax bills in July, and you can prepay, I think, at the end, before the end of August and get the discount, or if you don't, you then wait until the first of the year, half of our taxes will probably come in at that prepayment because the mortgage companies are required to pay at the lowest point. Those who are not having their taxes escrowed will wait till the first of the year. So we, so we have a lull in our revenue streams because of that. Sales taxes coming in constantly, but we still have to make payroll, we still have to make debt service, we still have to pay the daily bills for office supplies or, you know, food for the detention center, so on and so forth. So that's why it's important to have a savings account or a fund balance. In terms of fund balance, the next bullet, one-time costs versus reoccurring operations, we normally would like to use fund balance for the one-time costs and not those things that are reoccurring. And then the last bullet, a strong fund balance percentage and amount is evaluated by the rating agencies when we go out to borrow, to borrow money. As I said, our credit rating, and right now, we have a very good credit rating and it's good for us in terms of borrowing. On the next slide, just wanted to reiterate to the board some of your own policies regarding fund balance and the county's reserve policies. The two bullets wanted to point out, I kind of alluded to this just a moment ago, this says the county shall, as per local government commission guidelines, maintain a minimum unassigned general fund balance of 8.33% or an amount equal to at least one month of general fund operations. That, that minimum, as set by the LGC, we couldn't survive on one month savings. I mean, we would, we'd be going to the bank for a loan to make payroll or make debt payments and so forth. That's why the, you as a board have adopted the goal of a fund balance policy between 18 and 20%, which is in the next sentence saying, however it is the county's goal to exceed this minimum and maintain an unassigned fund balance in the 18 to 20% range. Then the other thing in the policy, the next bullet says, the county shall respect the integrity of the fund balance by utilizing it as sparingly as possible when funding future budgets. And right now, I mean, we're, percentage-wise, we're good on the fund balance, which if you look at the next slide. In terms of where we are projecting to be, if you look at the second to the last column on the right where it says 2017 estimated, we're estimating that the fund balance will decrease to 19.61% come June 30 of 2017. So it will have dropped from the 21.36%, which was the actual of June 30, 2016. As we forecast out, if you adopt this budget as presented and as proposed, as we forecast out a year to June 30, 2018, we would drop to 18.01% fund balance. It'd still be within your range, but just on the cusp of it. And that would be with a $4 million fund balance plug. And we're spending right now, or we project to spend in this last quarter, probably about a million dollars of actual fund balance savings as we drive toward the end of the year and close the year out. So from '16, the year '16 to '17, we dropped 1.75% in fund balance and we're projecting to drop, by the time we get to June 30 of next month, 1.6% additional. And then, again, the forecast would take us right to 18% for next year if, if things are adopted as proposed. At the end, I'm going to present some alternatives in terms of other approaches, if dropping that quickly is a concern to the board. But I will say, if, if the board does not consider, if no action is taken this year and you want to drop to 18, which is fine, but next year, as Lord willing, as I stand here, hopefully, in order not to drop further into the 16, like 16.3%, if you drop another 1.6%, you're going to have to do something, either cut expenses across the board for all the departments or looking at raising revenues in some manner, form or fashion. All right, moving on, and we'll come back to this in the end. The next slide, page 11 in the binder, again, just shows the graph of the fund balance. You can see the, in red on the left-hand column, the 18% and will be right there. And the trend, if we were, all things holding equal, and we, obviously, we can't project the economy to know how well the economy will or won't do, but if all things did hold equal and we just continued on that, that trend, and the blue line, as it moves right, would continue to go down. All right, expenditure review, if you'll reference page 12 in the binder. Again, we have a pie chart showing the illustration of how money is expended in all funds. And you can see the number one, the highest appropriation meets your number one goal, that being education, at 24.38%. Number two, public safety meets your goal, is your number two goal. And then it kind of, from there, number one, number two meets those goals. The rest of them, I think indirectly do as well, but those two coincide directly. On the next slide, the bottom of page 12 in the binder shows how all those funds break out in terms of expenditures, the monies per fund. Page 13 in the binder, that's not on the, on the slide before you, gives you an expenditure summary by fund, both page 13 and 14. Page 13 is the breakout within the general fund for every single department or function within the general fund that totals that 3.48% increase in spending. If you look at that chart, and it is kind of, it's even kind of small on the binder, but some of the highlights, Board of Elections is going up 23.46%. And you say, oh my gosh, why, why are they going up such a high percentage? Well, next year, we have municipal elections and the good thing about municipal elections is they pay us dollar for dollar those costs. So even though their budget's going up, they have a corresponding revenue source that comes back in to meet that. You can see MIS Management Information Systems is going up 10.16%. Again, that's having to do with the fact that we have now have the, within 911 and outside CAD software package and they're not able to cost allocate so much as in the past. Planning, 911 is the same thing, going up 21.88, same factor going on there. Non-departmental is going up 54.45% and that's more driven by this special loan package we're going to talk about for sheriff's vehicles and, once we get further in the presentation. And then on the next page, on page 14, gives you all the other funds, a summary of those, totaling again, that total budget of all funds of $245 million with that 3.51% overall increase in the county's budget. All right, moving to the next slide, page 15 in your binder, is the education funding overview. Can you get the next slide on the screen? This corresponds still to page 15 in the binder. Pitt County Schools had asked for an increase percentage-wise of 6.73%. That was $2,548,901. And then what's being recommended is a 2% increase, $757,467. Again, within the available revenues, based upon the tax base increase, sales tax and so forth, without raising the tax rate, that is what we could accommodate. Pitt Community College, on the next slide, had asked for a 15.71% increase. They're being recommended for the same allocation, 2% increase, $113,913. They're being recommended for the same allocation, 2% increase, $113,913. And we have, we did meet with all of the, well, we met probably a month ago with all the departments, but then some of the more major departments, the school system and community college, sheriff's department, those, health department, DSS, those who will be presenting before you, they did not get their recommended budget allocations until yesterday, and we met with them as well to kind of prime them to know what the recommendations were so they weren't blindsided coming into the workshops. On the screen, on this slide entitled "Education Funding Including Debt Service," here we wanted to illustrate the total amount of money for education that the county appropriates in one year, including the current expense going to Pitt County Schools, the current expense going to Pitt Community College, including the capital dollars for the category one, two, and three, the rent and so forth. Then the other three bullets, the school capital reserve, Article 46, and school improvement projects. In totality, in one year's time, when you include all that current expense money and all the debt service for that one, for one year, we are appropriating $59,845,723 to education, which then makes it that number one priority. When you saw it show up earlier on the pie chart at 24.38%, that's what's driving that percentage as being the county's number one priority. And funding-wise, I mean, I think it does illustrate that it is the county's number one priority. Some could argue it could be higher, but it's high in the percentage and it's high within the resources that we have to deal with based upon that the tax rate, it is So moving on, page 16 in the binder is now dealing with the EMS district fund. As the board is aware, we have 10 EMS squads, two are county-run, the other eight are nonprofit entities which we contract with. Within this fund, it is a, being recommended for $5.574,849. We're recommending that the rate be maintained at 4.6 cents, so that would not be increasing. And within that fund, they have a plan, a CIP, capital improvement plan, to replace vehicles and equipment, and we continue that plan. The actual appropriation going to the eight nonprofit squads would hold flat at $435,000 per squad. The two county-run squads do show increases, but again, we have to pay fully loaded costs in terms of the actual county employees, you get the full benefits package with retirement and cost of living and so forth. So that's why you see there's an increase in, different from the nonprofits. Moving to page 17 in the binder, and we're now on the screen entitled "For the Fire Fund." Again, the county has 20 nonprofit fire departments that are volunteer entities that provide a very valuable and needed resource and are a true partner with county government in terms of delivering the service to those residents in the rural parts of our county. You'll see there's only one fire department who's asking for a tax increase on page 17 of your binder, that being the Aiden Fire Department. Would like to go from 5.99 cents to 7.24. On the next slide, this past year, staff was directed to work with the fire association leadership and come back with a revised policy, which we did, and you approved, for a fire truck slash equipment replacement plan to revise what the county had done in the past. And basically, what you, the board adopted a formal policy for fire apparatus, supplement funding for county contracted fire departments. You did that back in August of last year. Highlights of that policy is you've agreed to fund five departments per year. You'd be eligible, a department could be eligible once every five years. There'd be a $25,000 appropriation by the board to the eligible departments, and the vehicle must be a pumper or tanker. So this year, on that table on page 17, you're going to see you have six departments who are asking for that appropriation. So as I recall the policy, it says that staff will work with the president of the fire association to prioritize those departments if it's more than five, and then probably the sixth department would probably then be asked to delay it till the following year. But in all reality, from years past, a lot of departments will come forward and say they want a, or they need a pumper or tanker, and normally, half of them are actually able to actually follow through and transact that transaction and pull down the county dollars. So it's never been an issue in the past. So it could be that of the six that are requesting it, we do reduce to five, but that sixth one may be able to jump into this year because someone, one of the five you approve may not do it. If not, they would just wait till the next year. All right, on the next slide, we're going to transition to funding for what we call our affiliate agencies. And this corresponds to page 18 in the binder. And we have two different types of outside agencies, the affiliate and then what we call the nonprofit sustaining agencies. The affiliate agencies, we really see aligned with county government in terms of our core mission and purpose and almost see them as, not a department, but kind of a pseudo-department. So you have the library, Shepherd Memorial Library in there, you have the Pitt County Council on Aging, and then the Pitt Greenville Airport. So with the library, there's an recommended increase of total budget appropriation of $592,718, which is over their current budget of $581,000. The Council on Aging is a recommended appropriation of $228,000 over their $224,000 they're currently receiving. And then for the economic stimulus plan at the airport, which is a plan to, we don't make truly direct appropriations to airport operations, but the board has agreed where we go 50/50 with the city of Greenville, in order to keep and maintain the aircraft, jets, and planes at the airport, this economic stimulus plan allows them to keep the plane here, pay their taxes, and then they get a credit towards fuel based upon the value of the plane during the year to pull down. So we've got $40,000 that's proposed for that. Otherwise, on the next slide, dealing with the affiliate agent, or I'm sorry, the sustaining agencies, these are various nonprofits that the county funds. There is one new one on that chart on page 18, the Churches Outreach Network. That was a new request for this year. They have been, they were asking for $15,400 as they partner with the DSS and one of their food distribution programs that the Churches Outreach Network conducts. I think the DSS maybe used some of the ABODs, the Able Body Adult Workers, whatever that acronym goes for. But at this point in time, with, just with limited resources, was not recommending them for appropriation just because we're trying to hold our nonprofits to a limited number. And you'll see otherwise on the list going down, the appropriations, I believe, are held flat across all the remaining ones on that table. The radio reading program has written us, they had originally asked for $1,500 in a year. We received a letter from them in the past week stating that they're going to discontinue their service due to they did a listening survey of those listening to the radio, and determined that there was a very, very low percentage of people actually utilizing the service locally, so they've withdrawn their request. So otherwise, all your other sustaining nonprofit dollars remain the same as in the past. In terms of, the next slide illustrates the libraries and the monies that are appropriated by the county, again, all those remain flat. Page 19, dealing with human resources, 19 in the binder. The slide before you, if we can go more slide forward, illustrates that there's a proposed net increase of six positions in this proposed budget. There's one position being eliminated and seven additions, so you have the net of six. On the next slide, which corresponds to 19 and 20 in your binder, 20 gives all of the positions, there were actually 27 new positions that were requested. I think those fully loaded 27 positions were like, is it 1.5 million, Dwayne, thereabouts?
Correct.
Which was well over a penny in value in terms of the equivalent to a tax rate increase. We dealt with those one-on-one and talked to the departments and then made some decisions ourselves as to what the recommendation would be. Within emergency management, we are recommending four EMT paramedics for their paramedic program that would come out of the EMS fund, that's not general fund-driven. Within financial services, we are recommending a purchasing specialist to work with purchase orders and overall purchasing within the county. Dwayne has assured me that if we could save a half percent or a percent on our total purchases via better coordination of purchasing, we could more than pay for that position. Within public health, we are recommending a community health technician, which is 95% funded, through federal dollars, only 5% general fund. And then within the sheriff's office, recommending a gang intelligence detective. Last year, you had approved two of them, this would be an increase for an additional one. You're going to hear from, some of the departments are coming before you that will make cases for, very valid cases for positions. We just didn't have the revenues. I mean, we couldn't go into fund balance any deeper, we knew that, well, I can't say we knew, but I was projecting that the board's desire to hold the tax rate at 68.6, and based upon that funded what we felt was the priorities and what the budget could accommodate. So moving on, page 21, we have a slide for that too, benefit calculation rates. This is basically shows what we pay in terms of retirement for the workforce, whether it's the local government retirement system, the 401K, life insurance. We are proposing an increase in the hospitalization, costs for what the employee pays, what the county contributes or if a county buys supplemental coverage for family coverage or spouse or so forth, those rates would stay the same. But the monthly, what we call our qualified and not qualified participation fee, basically today, an employee, if they're, I'm going to say qualified, if they get their six points for their health minimization participation fee, if, whether they do physical exercise, whether they classes, whether they do the health assessment, all the different things they can do and clock, if they get six credits or six points, whatever you want to call it, then they get to pay that lower fee. If they don't, are not able to do that, or just choose to not participate, then they have to pay the higher fee. Today's $56 per month. We're proposing that to go, to increase by $20 on both sides. So the 20 would go to 40, and the 56 would go to 76 per month of what the employee would pay, what skin in the game they would have for the cost of funding and operating our self-funded health plan. There's also, on page 22, there's a chart illustrating the fund. The fund is actually in pretty good shape as a self-funded hospitalization fund. We are projecting the fund balance, I think right now we're around 12% fund balance, projecting it to go up to 19% by the end of next year, all things holding constant. Again, with employee health, you don't know when you're going to have a good year, a bad year. I think two years ago, we had kind of a bad year, but this year is so far looking pretty good, three quarters of the way in.
Just want to highlight the reason why we're going, we're sitting at the level that we're at. If you recall, last fiscal year, we had a general fund transfer of $1.3 million to help stabilize the fund. So that's the reason why the fund balance is at the level that it is. That's the primary reason.
All right, on the next slide on the screen, this is not in the binder, I don't believe. We wanted to just kind of give you a history. Again, we're transitioning still in human resources, but in terms of market adjustment, what you have provided employees for cost of living or market adjustments based upon that traditional CPI, Consumer Price Index reading that we take January to January each year. If you go back to 2009, 2010, this table shows that the CPI over that period of time has grown or adjusted 14.10%. What we have actually implemented is 8.6%, that's what we've been able to implement. When you annualize that, because in some years, we did it, we did part of it July 1, then we waited and did part of it January 1, so when you annualize it, it's about 7.35. So the main point I'm trying to make with this slide is that even with the market adjustment or the COLA increase you gave last year, and even if you were to give a 2% this year, we'll still be 5.5% behind what all those adjustments were over the years. That's just there as information, not, not trying to drive any point home, but just to illustrate that, you know, we're trying to keep up with the cost of inflation and the CPI, but it's within available revenues. All right, on the next slide that is not in the binder, talking about our ongoing classification study program where human resources looks at a third of the workforce every year, we do, we'll do a third, this last year, we did the administrative professional classifications, and HR goes in to make sure that the beginnings, the base salaries of all the positions are at market rate as we compete with other counties and entities. We've done this for a very long time, and HR does a great job at this. This is an in-house process. Some jurisdictions will ignore this and just kind of not look at base salaries, wait five or 10 years, then decide, oh, we need to hire a consultant to look at this. Consultant that comes back, drives the study, and they have a price tag implemented of $2 million, $3 million, of which, you know, then the governing board is aghast and just... So I think the way we do it, by doing it every year, doing a third of all positions, like, we'll begin the process over July 1. I believe we'll start the clerical classifications next year. Right now, there's only one recommended change for the, and that's for the Assistant Animal Control Program, and that would be to change the grade from 63 to 65 based upon the survey. And I think over the past two or three years, we haven't had many changes at all, so that we do have one change being recommended. In terms of who we look at on the next slide for comparable counties within the classification study, a management team met with Florida Hardy, our HR director, to review and to adjust comparable counties. We've added Onslow and Gaston Counties, and we continue to use ECU in the city of Greenville for local comparison with, when and if needed. So you can see on the next slide, and this is not in the binder, gives all of our comparable counties with the population being the primary driver of one of the factor to use them as a comparable county. We considered other factors, whether the value of the tax base, the tax rate, so on and so forth, but decided, at the end of the day, I think we just all agreed that population was probably the best driver. Because, I mean, if you compare our tax, our tax base at $12.6 billion against some of these other counties, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison because a lot of our tax base, not a lot of it, but a portion of it is non-taxable. If you look at the hospital, medical center, even though we do get payment lieu taxes, I also want to say that from them, but overall, that's not taxable. ECU is not taxable, so there's a good part of our tax base that, if you compared us against our comparable counties, I'm saying, the tax base could be $5 or $6 billion more than what it is. All right, on the next slide, the Employee Medical Insurance Fund. Actually, I've kind of already highlighted this a little bit, but the slide talks about the employee participation fee, again, changing that from 20 to 40, and 50, 60 to 76. We do have some employee benefit changes beyond that that I'll highlight in just a moment on the, on the next slide once we get to it. We are implementing a new diabetes management program. I mentioned the point about that we're seeing claims are lower than we've had in the prior year, and then here, the last two bullets are about the fund balance, estimated to be 12% coming June 30th of this year, and then estimating a year from now to be 19%. Or actually, I think, actually, June 30th to 16 was 12%, and then June 30th of 17, 19%. On the next slide, within our self-funded Employee Medical Insurance Fund, we are, we have worked with Blue Cross Blue Shield in terms of tweaking the plan, the benefit structure, so we don't have to increase the rates in terms of what, $626 a month right now is what the county pays into the plan per month, per employee. We're trying to hold that constant. So in order to do that, the modifications on, this is not in the binder, but on the slide, in yellow, you'll see the primary care visits are going to increase from $25 to $30. Specialty visits are going to increase from $50 to $55. And then moving down the slide, the stuff that's not highlighted in yellow stays the same, everything from well baby, immunizations, physical exams, pap smear. Then you get down to the out-of-pocket maximum for an individual is currently $4,500. We're proposing that to increase to $4,800. The out-of-pocket maximum for a family is currently... The out-of-pocket maximum for a family is currently $9,000. We're proposing to increase that to $9,600. Then the last thing on the very bottom of the slide shows the pharmacy charges. Currently, it's a tiered, a tiered structure that's 5, 25, 40, and then 25% of the cost, proposing that to go up to 8, 40, 55, and then the 25% would remain the same. By tweaking and making these changes, we can hold the actual dollar amount that we pay per employee constant in the same. We hate to give the employees, propose the cost of living and then take it out of their paycheck at the same time by having their health insurance costs go up. Now, indirectly, their health insurance costs are going up if they're going to utilize it, whether the pharmacy, or they have to do the adipocent maximums, or if they go to the doctor. But I do want to state the county continues to have its, what we want to call it, the medical practice over here on Memorial Drive in the Sixth Street where an employee can go for $10.
Employee clinic.
Employee clinic, thank you. Employee clinic, which has been highly successful. The employees are allowed to go on county time, and it's not counted against them. So if they're sick, we encourage them to go be seen, get whatever medications you need. We believe that has helped drive down costs as well. So even though the primary care visits are increasing, they can go right a block over, or this location's a block over, for the other campuses is a longer drive, but they can go on county time, be seen, and they're seen very quickly. We're giving priority, and for $10, it's a, it's a good deal for the employees, and it's a good, it's a good factor for our health plan. Page 22 in the binder is just an illustration of the fund and its costs, and the last column is showing what we're projecting for the fund balance, ending June 30th at that 19%. And again, like Dwayne said, if we hadn't made, if we had not had made that large transfer from the County's General Fund into this fund, we wouldn't have such a strong fund balance, but it was needed at the time, and we do need a strong fund balance within this fund because we may get hit with another bad year, and that's why you have a fund balance.
And just of note, we do not anticipate having to utilize any fund balance in the Health Insurance Fund this year, and there is no, very minimal, maybe less than $10,000 fund balance appropriated for next year's budget. So we're looking at a, pretty much a break-even scenario for next year, which is good.
I always, I shouldn't speak this because words sometimes come true, but I always joke with, with Dwayne and staff and say that normally when the economy is taking a dive, our health fund recovers and does real well. It's kind of an inverse relationship. I was telling him, I said, I don't know if the recessions on the, on the rise are coming because our health fund is doing well, but let's just hope maybe both the economy and the health fund stay on the same track going up, Lord willing. All right. Moving to our CIP, as the board is aware, you've actually had two workshops on the Capital Improvement Plan, and basically with projects that are identified on page 23 in the binder are those projects that were previously presented with the exception of one, and we'll get into some detail on that, and that one being under Public Safety. That is a vehicle replacement plan for the sheriff's office, and you're going to see, and you're probably going to, eyes are probably going to open when you see that the dollar amount, but $1,110,000 we're recommending for a vehicle replacement plan, and I'll get into that in the next slide. Otherwise, everything on this slide is as the board has seen. If you look at that yellow column going down the middle, recommended for fiscal year 1718, you've got our regular vehicle replacement plan that we do within county government that the sheriff also receives an allocation of vehicles out of for $620,000. You have facilities capital maintenance at 250, security improvements $100,000. And then moving into the Public Safety EMS capital replacement as recommended by the EMS Oversight Committee 350, which is the standard amount. Courthouse security for camera system, $139,260. Education, we've got the...
That's, that's actually the lab equipment, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was reading the next one down.
Yes, sir.
The lab equipment, yeah, thank you. On education, you're going to see under Pitt County Schools, recurring projects. Remember last year, you increased their category one, two, and three from $750,000 to a million? So you see that million continued over here. That was actually another cost factor we had to take into effect this year, the fact that you increased that, and we assumed you wanted to continue that. The same thing for Pitt Community College, increased it from 75 to 100,000. And then under Environmental Protection, you've got several vehicles and equipment there for the solid waste program that are identified. All right. So now, if we look at the next slide, Sheriff's Vehicle Replacement Plan. So the bottom line on this is, when we met with the sheriff's office, we were looking at their, their line within their budget that identified the total cost to maintain their fleet. It was like 900 and...
960,000.
60, some thousand dollars. And we asked, how much of that do you actually, then they were talking about how old their fleet was and how much they were having to spend to maintain that fleet, and now that I think we identified $360,000 a year, we're just going in to replace transmissions and engines and brakes and all these major costs at 5, 6, 7, 8,000 per vehicle. And we thought, well, you know, if, instead of just budgeting those maintenance costs, what if we reduced that line item by that $360,000 and went out and borrowed $1.1 million and bought 30 vehicles? If you had newer vehicles, you're not maintaining them like you are today, because if you look on here, they have a total of 173 vehicles. The average age of the sheriff's fleet is 13 years old. If you look at average 2004 model, in terms of how the mileage breaks down on the fleet within that department, six vehicles are over 200,000, 79 have between 100 and 200,000, and then 43 have between 15 and 100, and then the 45 vehicles that have less than 50. Again, they're paying $360,000 per year to maintain those vehicles. Now, one thing I did, tell the sheriff, well, let's move to the next slide. This corresponds to page 23 in the, in the notebook. So again, a proposed loan amount, $1.1 million, proposing to replace 30 vehicles. See that the terms of loan, 2%, three years, and then annual payments. Annual payments is a little, a little bit above what the 360 amount that we had mentioned a moment ago. Did tell the sheriff that I thought it would be your expectation as a board that you would want to see the list of vehicles, the type of vehicles that is being purchased, if you agree to this, before any type of purchase order or purchases made of these, and he agreed that that was reasonable to do that. Because obviously, there's been some history on vehicles in the past that we want to make sure you, as the governing body, are comfortable with the transaction, and we wanted to tee this up also, so that we would hope that you would see the reasonableness in this, of this approach, rather than just continuing to pay out so much money to maintain an old fleet. Now, we will want to retire those 30 vehicles. We don't want to keep those around, I mean, especially those that have between 100 and 100, 100, 200,000 miles on them. Sheriff was saying the other day that, I think his, his thought was, when a vehicle had between 110 and 120,000 on it, we should probably retire it. That was his thoughts on that, and you'll hear from him when he presents tomorrow. On the next slide, projects not recommended, those are the projects that were also presented to you in the CIP workshop. Just, I'm not going to go through the list, you've had a workshop on this, but you can see those as they're listed on the project. Not to say that they're not needs, but they're just not, as we, as we changed the process of doing the CIP schedule and approach with the board, unless there was a truly identifiable actual funding source to fund the project, we weren't going to put it on the table to, for it to be implemented, unless the board was committed to, if you're committed to going for the voters for a bond, or if you're going to increase taxes, or you had some, or if there was some known grant that we were going to go after and we had a good probability of it being funded, then we could probably put it on the funded, fundable list, but otherwise it had to fall off as a not recommended. I will say just, the last project on that list on the slide, the gymnasium in Alice F. King Park at $5,559,094. I know there was some interest, and there's been some public interest in that. We have added that project to this planning process the state is having us go through, through emergency management, through the resilient planning response to Hurricane Matthew. We've got, we were hoping for there to be a $900 million appropriation by Congress to the state of North Carolina to pay for different needs due to flooding. Kind of bad news is, we, we understand that the Congress appropriated $6 million rather than $900 million. We have a resolution coming before you this coming Monday to ask the congressional delegation to look at our statewide needs, local needs, but the whole point of me saying all this is, we've included this project on that list of needs because we, we're going to, we're calling this also a special, not special needs shelter, but a shelter, sheltering facility for crisis events like hurricanes and flooding and whatnot where we would need to shelter people. So we're hoping that if Congress gives us closer to that 900 million or some portion of it, and we can get some, some priority for this, that maybe we could fund a portion of that out of those funds. So just looking for every, every approach we can on that project. The next slide is basically just showing the dollars of the CIP, of the remaining years and the corresponding amounts based upon functional area. Okay, we're winding down. Okay, a look forward. You know, as always, we try to come before you and look at, we don't want to just put blinders on and just look at the new year for 1718 and just think it all ends on June 30th of 18, because it doesn't. The year's role and the decisions that are made in the current year have an effect on the following year. So in terms of future considerations, in terms of the look forward, obviously, fund balance is a consideration, it's a concern and a consideration, and I'll get into some things in a slide in a moment. Our OPEB, which is our Other Post-Employment Benefits, affects our retired health insurance program. Dwayne and I are going to come back to you probably at future meetings outside of budget process to talk about some strategies. In terms of your annual audit process, the comprehensive annual financial report that's done, OPEB costs, and OPEB costs are basically all those employees who work for Pitt County Government today who are eligible to retire at some point in the future, and you've got to carry health insurance for them, we've got to reflect the cost of that within the audit.
Start, starting next year, it will be reflected in our balance sheet.
So in order to, right now, we do a pay-as-you-go process. We basically fund and fund those costs as needed year to year. Some entities are actually doing, setting up irrevocable trusts and putting monies into those that would then pay those costs, which then lowers your OPEB calculation in your audit. But we'll talk about the ins and outs and what options you have as a board and considerations you have for that in a future time. That doesn't affect this budget, but that is a, is a consideration. The last bullet on here, subdivision street maintenance assessments. Obviously, we have the Woodmore project that is going forward right now, that I think asphalt is probably going down as we speak, very successful. The bid came in, I think we had estimated a $200,000 project, came in at $139,000, very fortunate for those landowners who will be assessed. We have Woodmore Farms behind it who are actively working, and I think they're up to maybe 66% of the folks who have signed petitions, we need 75%. But the real dilemma now will be, as the fund balance continues to drop, you would have to appropriate monies out of your fund balance to implement the project, and then the monies don't pay back, they'll pay back over, the current project is a 10-year assessment period paying back, so Woodmore Farms could be a half a million dollar project. So that would be, if you were to decide to fund that, that would then drop fund balance further, even though you'd have an expectation that those dollars will come back in via assessments, but just want to point that out to you. On the next slide, titled this fiscal year 1718, recommended budget and alternate budget considerations. And if you want to see a larger version of this, this is page 25 in the binder. Might be easier, easier to read. And really, this whole slide and these, this discussion, we're dealing with the general fund, that operating fund within all funds that the tax rate is really driven by. So the first column, you've got the budget expenditures within the general fund, the fund balance appropriation, tax rate, required reduction or tax increase, expenditure changes, revenue changes, and then the forecasted fund balance percentage. So that, that second column from the left is the recommended budget for 1718 as is, and it shows what would happen to fund balance. So overall expenditures, 124 million, $4 million fund balance appropriation, tax rate would be at 68.6 cents. There's no expenditure changes because it's as laid out, presented to you this morning. No revenue changes because it's as laid out this morning again. So that forecasted fund balance, if all things holding equal, we would drop to 18.01%. Again, that's a forecasted number, that's, Dwayne's kind of, yeah, I don't see his face there. In terms of, we're forecasting what we believe that number would be, it's not quite looking at a fortune-telling ball per se, but we are forecasting based upon what we know. As an alternate to that, you could reduce the fund balance appropriation by a million dollars by balancing the budget by reducing expenditures. So your expenditures within that general fund could, would reduce from 124 million to 123 million. You then would only have a $3 million fund balance plug in there. Tax rate stays the same, again, that reduction, a million dollars, and, well, how, how could you do that, you say, Mr. Manager? Well, I'm not recommending this, but these are things that could be done. You could decrease the COLA by 1% from, from 2% to 1%, that yields $480,000. You could decrease Pitt County Schools appropriation by a percent, that's 378,000. BCC is equivalent of almost 57,000. And then you see the decrease to Shepherd Memorial, decreases Council on Aging, and then there's additional reductions needed, 76,000. So in effect, the revenue changes, you would decrease your fund balance revenues by a million dollars as it's being plugged into the budget. With that, by June 30th of next year, you would have a projected fund balance of 18.73%. Or conversely, in the last column, if you keep your overall expenditures as presented this morning at 124 million, you only plug in $3 million of fund balance if you were to increase the tax rate by .694 cents, a little less than a penny.
.798 is what we've done.
Okay. Is that a typo on there?
I'm sorry. The tax rate would be .694.
Okay.
The new tax rate.
Okay, .694.
Yes, sir.
Again, you've got the reduction of a million dollars to fund balance. Even with that strategy, your, again, your forecasted fund balance would be 18.73%. So technically, you can, you can take that first column under the manager's recommended budget and move forward, implement the budget, and just realize that as we stand here a year from now, you're going to be at 18.01, thereabouts, percent fund balance. And if we did nothing, if all things held constant, and you decided to take this exact same budget in the following fiscal year into fiscal year 1819, and again, appropriate $4 million, then you would expect the fund balance to drop again by about 1.7% factor, so it would drop down to 16.3% by the end of fiscal year 1819, the following fiscal year from the year that we're planning for right, right now. Just want you to be aware that there's, at some point, some adjustment will be needed. Now, revals not till 20, which would be the 2021...
2021 year.
Year, which we would then, you know, you have your traditional year where you adjust the rate based upon a revale, so we've got some time before we get there. So did want you to realize, I don't want you to think that we as staff had blinders on or just plugging a $4 million. The reason I plugged, originally I plugged $3 million as the fund balance plug when we started this whole process, and went back and we reviewed the discussions last year, and based upon the board's desire and sentiment to utilize fund balance, decided either we were going to have to do some deeper cuts within departments, not offer a cost of living and such, or, and other reductions, or we'd go ahead and do the $4 million plug, realizing it will take us down to the 18%, but technically, you're still within your policy guidelines of 18 to 20. It's just, what do you do with the next year, the 1819? So, and I realized after I, we developed all this, I was kind of ending this whole thing on kind of a down note. I apologize for that, but at the same time, I do want you to realize what the forecast is and what the revenue picture looks like if we continue on the track we're on. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Scott, for that presentation. We're going to have some comments from the board, but I do want to say personally that I, I think this budget is... that I, I think this budget is good from the point of, there's no change, uh, in our tax rate with the critical, uh, situation that our citizens of Pitt County has gone through, through the hurricane and, and the flooding, uh, our tax rate is still the same, and I think that this is good for our citizens. Uh, I note too that the market adjustment as far as the employees is concerned, giving them a raise is two percent. Now, do I see this two percent in the pay-for-performance merit as well as?
Yes, the, um.
As, as the COLA.
Yeah, they can also earn between the, either a one point two or two point four, depending upon where they are on the, the salary range, so they can actually get the two percent in either the one point two on top of it, which would be three point two, or the two percent plus two point four, which would be a four point four.
I always think that it's good to, to, uh, give our employees, especially those that at the bottom, because they are the driving force of this county, in terms of service, to give them a, 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 a raise, and I, I'm certainly, um, an advocate of COLA. I think that this would give all of them, uh, uh, a benefit of raising their salary to a point that they can live comfortable, because, let's face it, the cost of living is steadily, steadily going up. So, uh, overall, I, I think this is a, was a good, a good budget. Now, on Alice Keane Park, uh, I did have some concerns about that. You did mention that maybe some federal funding, uh, something that you're looking into. Uh, I, I, I would love to see, uh, something in that area, uh, begin to, if it, even if it's in some phases, um, that we can phase into some support for that park. But those are some things, and I'm sure I will have some other question, uh, comments as the presenters start and, and we go further into this budget. But it's time I'd like to start the process of questioning, uh, with Glenn, and, uh, we'll move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't have a whole lot, uh, I think it's a well-put-together budget. Um, I do, though, um, I don't think I am comfortable going that close to eighteen percent. Uh, I don't know that we need to make as drastic cuts to get to eighteen point seven three, but eighteen point five would probably be my baseline of how close I was willing to get to that border, and I'm not, uh, I know that we, we'll have several options of how we get there. I, I do like the pay-for-performance, and I would almost rather see us move, uh, to a, a larger range of increase for that versus the COLA, because then you're paying people more for better work versus paying, um, just, uh, because you were here. Uh, not that it's undeserved, but I mean, I'd, I'd rather pay for, you know, excellent work than, um, than just, uh, being here, but at the same time, I know where that we're behind, so I'm okay with as proposed, but, um, I, I really, I think it's a good buy. I think you, you've done a lot with a little, but, uh, I think that we do need to consider some cuts, and we may have to get creative, because I, I'm, I'm just not comfortable going that close to eighteen point one, and if we do that this year, then we're only putting off a tough decision for a year, and, uh, and that puts us in a, a bind next. So we're either gonna have to make hard decisions now or hard decisions then, and, and I always prefer to do things upfront if possible, but that's all I have for now. Like I said, I appreciate the staff, the hard work you've done, you've, you've, you've done a great job, and, uh, it's getting more expensive, and the revenues aren't coming in to cover the, the expense. But I think priority-wise, uh, my priorities are always, you know, to make sure we're paying the people that do the work and that we're covering the basic services that we have to cover. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got for now.
Okay.
So from what I'm hearing is that really, if you don't want to hit fund balance, we're gonna have to have a seventy-one cent per hundred tax rate, throw a dart at the board. That's really what it's saying, right?
To cover it all, to cover it all, yes, sir.
Yeah, to keep it as you recommended, e- except for hitting fund balance, we would actually need a seventy-one cent tax rate thereabouts.
Well, I think probably more of the seventy, as was recommended last year, unless Dwayne's got different.
Last year was seventy, but the three, the four million dollars is not gonna be covered by a.
Right, he's, he's, he's talking about drastically reducing your fund balance plug. I'm assuming that's what you're saying.
True, true, yeah, if you were to go back down to the two million dollar plug, that very much will.
What, what our trend, and it's a short trend at the moment, but what our trend is suggesting is that as we're plugging the four million dollars appropriated fund balance, we're, we're looking to spend about a million dollars of that. So I don't think we would need to go all the way to the seventy-one, because we're not spending, uh, the entire four million dollars, but if we went to the seventy, then we would be able to bring our fund balance appropriation back down to what we consider to be a comfortable level.
Well, I don't like taxes any more than anybody else, but the bottom line, it sounds like, again, to me, you either do it now, consider it now, or you're gonna be hit with having to do something next year. Next year's probably not a good year for, I don't have anything else.
When you were going over the fund balance, I wrote a question that says, um, since you're recom, uh, looking at this in a projection regarding the fund balance, what is, did you look at the projected growth to balance it off?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we, we forecasted our revenues next year. Our, if we probably held things constant, as we're looking at the sales tax increasing this year, held that constant next year, also as the tax base, the two point six eight percent in the ad valorem tax base, probably held that constant as well as, that, that's all holding constant to the new year.
Correct, correct.
As part of forecast.
If you look at our, our ad valorem growth rate during the, from the last recession or the last revaluation, we had an average annual growth in our base of one point five percent. We are now at that two point six eight percent. We feel like that two point six eight percent is a good new normal for us, and so that's what we're using in the forecast and looking at next year's.
Well, I, 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 I don't like cutting the, um, employees. Um, we've gone through that when we were discussing it, and, uh, everyone must live, and when you have one rate cut and they have less money, you find that crime rate increases as well. So I don't like seeing balancing on, uh, projected social issues of criminal rates. And, um, this growth rate, um, I, I, I'm with you on the, on the increase in taxes. I'm, everybody tells me no new tax, no new tax, and I realize we can't do this, keep doing the same thing expecting different results. However, I think growth rate in this county, when you look at the economic trend, is positive. It's positive for this county, and if we keep doing good things, I think our growth rate will continue. So I just wanted you to know, that was the only concern that I wrote as you went through it, Mr. Manager. And, um, I really like keeping that, uh, employee's, uh, contribution that we give.
In response to the growth rate in population, if you look at the population going, about that tax chart I presented, if you go back to like two thousand and one, two thousand and two, our population has increased thirty percent of, from that point in time to now, but we have maintained the same, basically the same tax rate. Now, admittedly, yes, the, the base has increased as, as, as well, but overall, population has increased too. I think population is, is increased as a higher percentage than the tax base itself, which generates the tax revenues.
When we look at the houses being built and that sort of thing, you know, we, we don't have enough houses, and, uh, that, that's a strong indication for, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you very much for a good budget.
Um, again, I'd like to thank everyone. I'm always, um, very proud of our department, our, um, county department, when they come forward with a budget, because I, I know the number of hours that they spend prior to getting here, uh, and thank you for that. Um, I'm really kind of agreeing with the two gentlemen down here at the end, and I think Mary also agreed with some of the things they mentioned. The, uh, tax rate, I think we need to look at it now rather than later. Um, I don't know exactly where we should go with it. Um, I've got the six point six eight five, I think, was that correct? And, um, anyway, we were, you know, you've got a point seven oh, and when you look at what you just said right then, the number, the increase in population and the number of houses and businesses that have come in since two thousand and one, it is, um, and we haven't made any increase. If it's gone up, it's gone back down again, so, um, I certainly think that's something we ought to look at, and it's not comfortable for anybody, but I do think we need to look at it. These things are not maybe, um, when we were in Raleigh at the Assembly Day, I remember hearing about, um, a bill that was supposed to make it easier for counties to utilize sales tax. Am I right on that or wrong? Or to implement additional sales tax? I mean, I know many years ago when we went after it, we went after a one cent sales tax, and we got knocked down after almost two years of hard work. I know Mr. Garrus was on that committee with me.
There was a bill introduced, I think what you're referring to, that, um, provided additional, um, more latitude in the use of a quarter cent sales tax like we got if you wanted to use that.
For something else.
Yes, or to designate it for education only so that it would be, um, uh, more likely for other counties who had not passed a general quarter cent sales tax to have a successful referendum.
So it's not any easier to increase, because I know the long time we spent studying the sales tax back then, I forgot how many years ago it has been now, but all of ours is designated for building for the community college and for the, um, Pitt County schools, and that has been a godsend for us over these past few years when everybody was kind of not being able to build or construct or remodel, and we've been able to do that in our county. So it doesn't mean that they've made it easier for us to get additional.
No, but they've added, they have changed the options.
Okay, um, but we're under that option.
Yes, we're already there.
Exactly, right at the limit. Um, just a quick question, do we have a number of our, um, employees that utilize the health center? I mean, like annually, or just, uh, I mean, I would just like to know, you say it's successful, but, and I think it's a great idea, and I think it's something that we did a while back that has certainly helped to keep our insurance as good as it is and as, um, stable. So I'd just like to know that. Um, the other thing, uh, going back to the vehicles, uh, for the Sheriff's Department, uh, just a little information, I, I know you spoke to it, that we, and I think everybody on this board would like to know the vehicles that are purchased. You know, are they going to replace those deputies, those SRO officers, that, those people who are driving those cars every single day? And, you know, because I want us to get the biggest bang for the buck if we're getting thirty new vehicles, so that's all, and thank you again, and I think we're, um, thank you very much. It's a very good budget, and it's given us some good thought, things to think about.
Commissioner.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick question for Dwayne Holder. I'm looking at page fourteen, and just some clarification for me, I'm not a financial expert. It says debt, debt service, is, is, is that twenty, twenty million?
Yes, sir, twenty million, three hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay, is that the total, the aggregate we're paying on loans, or is that just interest?
Yes, sir, that's principal and interest. That is due and payable next fiscal year, yes, sir.
That's principal, very good. Uh, next question, Florida Hardy. Uh, in the classification study comparative and looking at the city and everything, are we actually tracking, could you have for me a graph for the last ten years, just the number of employees who have just up and quit? Because I think that's a, that's a valid thing that you need to be tracking where you're looking to see, are we really paying our people enough? Are they leaving in droves? I do think that needs to be looked at.
Our, um, our retention rate is probably eighty-eight percent, but twelve percent of our employees annually turn over, which, which is not a.
But you compile that yearly, and you could put that in a graph just to see.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. And, uh, just to comment on Commissioner Glenn, uh, being so concerned about getting too close to, to eighteen, I'm looking at the graph, and that's still ten, uh, ten percent above the floor, and we seem, in the, in the bad year of two thousand and twelve, we dipped to fourteen with no ill effect, which I'm sure Mr. Garrus will have something to say about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Farley, we actually did have, um, we were cited by the bond rating agencies and put on a watch list because we allowed our fund balance to, to drop. We were close to, to have, to suffering a down, downgrade in our bond ratings, which then would have cost us more money subsequently as we went to borrow the money for Pitt County Schools.
Yes, I've heard the argument that costs more to borrow money, which we shouldn't be encumbering our children for the future anyway by always borrowing money, so.
Mr. Garrus.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, I'd like to thank Scott and Dwayne and his staff for a tremendous job, as you always do. You make this task much easier for us to, to make, uh, the decisions we need to make. Uh, my first question on page eight in the notebook, that two cents that we've been putting in for capital reserve, how is that fun? What, what is in that fund now?
Um, that, that was discontinued.
That was discontinued?
Yes, sir. Um, yeah, if you see, you see the rate went down from seventy cents to, um, down to the revenue neutral of sixty-six five. I'll, I'll have to pull the documentation, um, of that, but that, that two cent contribution from the general fund was not maintained.
Okay.
Well, you could argue, though, invers, conversely, though, that that two cent rate increase from sixty-eight to seventy cents that was, was at Commissioner, Vice Chairman Owens's motion, and it was implemented, was for school capital construction, and I think we did borrow money, because that was prior to the quarter cent sales tax going to voters and being put in effect. So we probably have.
So when we, quarter cent sales tax, we did away with it?
Well, I won't say we did away with it, we, we, we went out and borrowed money for the school system, and probably it's built into the debt service that we currently have on a twenty-five-year note. Uh, I'm conjecturing.
Yeah, I haven't pulled the actual documentation on this, but I can, I can pull that.
My whole reason for asking that.
Yes, sir.
Was to see if there was any excess in there, uh, that we might be able to do something for the gym at Alice Keane Park.
I see.
Because I think that is something that most of us have expressed a concern about, and we would like to do it, and I appreciate the, uh, the classification you guys were talking about and, and trying to see if we could get some funding for that for safety reasons. Uh, that would be great if we could do that. I know that, uh, I've got several contacts on that to try to do that if we can. Um, the other concern that I have is the same concern that has been addressed by most of my fellow commissioners, and that is, of course, fund balance. Um, I don't like the idea of pulling the fund balance down to the eighteen one. I agree with, uh, Commissioner Webb, eighteen and a half would probably, it, it would be reasonable. Um, and I understand our strategy, and I understand what we have said in the past around our fund balance, keep it at that eighteen to twenty percent range. And of course, the other thing that concerns me, uh, some on page eleven in the notebook is that our peer counties are up at the twenty-six plus percent category, and that doesn't mean that I think we ought to be at twenty-six percent, because I don't. I think the eighteen to twenty percent is still okay, that is what we said in the past, but I don't like it going down to the absolute minimum. Um, so we do have to look at this very closely, because if we don't make a difficult decision this year, the inevitable is we're gonna have to make it next year. And the, the two options, as Scott has already stated, is we're gonna have to reduce some costs, or we're gonna have to increase taxes. And I don't like either one of those, because the, uh, request that were given to us this year, we've already in this budget, uh, reduced that by six million dollars.
Correct. Correct.
And I think it would be very, very challenging to further reduce that. So we just really need to look at that very closely and come up with a, a strategy this year. Because again, if we don't do it this year, we're going to be forced to do it next year and I'd rather do it in kind of a proactive mode rather than a reactive mode. The other question I had Scott on page 29 and 30 of the handout where you were talking about the additional cars, the reduction in maintenance of $360,000 if we upgraded the cars versus the cost of 385 for getting the new cars. Is that a direct offset?
Yes.
Okay.
Dwayne?
Yes, sir. We were able, in conjunction with the sheriff, to reduce their auto maintenance line by the same amount or the 385. That's a swap, yes, sir.
To me, that is a no-brainer. That's something we ought to do.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you very much for all your work on this budget.
Commissioner, I'll get...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you to the manager and Dwayne and the rest of the staff for your hard work. I don't have any questions right now, but I do hear all of my other colleagues' concerns. Of course, I would be concerned about raising taxes and all of that, but if we're going to meet our priorities that we've set, then I am, I am concerned about how we meet them and that we do continue to meet them. So I will be, be looking and listening and, and then maybe later I may have some questions. But right now, I, again, I want to thank the staff and manager for, for this budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I did see the Alice King Gym in another budget when I went to the state. So I think what you, I, I've, I've seen it. And so I think what you're suggesting may happen because it was in another budget that coming out of the emergency and they were using the emergency effort in the same manner. And I was a little surprised because I know we had voted it down, but I thought it was a good gesture.
We'll take state funds if they're given to us.
You might want to check on it.
Okay. With that said, we're running a little bit behind and we're going to ask Dr. Linker to prepare herself to come up, but we're going to take about a four or five minutes break quickly.
Oh, thank you.
And we'll come back and be listening to Dr. Linker and Deborah Beckett on their budget. So we're looking forward to you coming on up.
Pretty likely.
Get ready. We're now going to listen to Dr. Linker, Pitt County Board of Education, and Deborah Beckett. We also have the presentation in your binders that you might want to follow. Dr. Linker.
Thank you, Chairman, County Commissioners, Mr. Elliott. Would like to just take a second and make sure everyone knows I've got Deborah Beckett back here, our Chief Financial Officer. Deborah and Matt Johnson are Facilities Executive Director, are Facility Services. We also have with us the Chair of the Board of Education, Caroline Dorni, back here as well. So first of all, let's just go through the budget quick. First of all, we know you guys take good care of us as a school system. Just want to thank you for what you do for us and the opportunities we have to give our students here in Pitt County. And we know that. And we're lucky here in Pitt County to have the, have the programs and opportunities we have in our school system. Not everybody has the same things we have here and we are very, very well aware of that. Basically, our budget proposal every year is broken down into three phases. One is proposed increases in county appropriations. They're usually generated by fixed costs pushed down from the state, from the state budget, any new money requests, and then also capital appropriations. Today, we'll also go into a little bit of our, where we are with our capital projects from the lobs we passed a little over a year ago. Mr. Johnson will handle that part toward the end of the program. Just a general budget of what the Pitt County Board of Education has passed about two weeks ago or so. You can see what we're asking for, where the money is broken down into. You can see we have something on there called traffic violation revenues of $750,000. We hope that comes to fruition, but that's kind of what we, the red light cameras that will be in place starting this summer. We'll, the Board of Education has earmarked that money for technology issues. If you remember, last year we came to you and requested technology funds. We've taken that off our agenda, that we've been able to hopefully have a revenue stream that will, will meet those needs. So basically, our proposed increases, if you look at the middle line there, proposed increase from all, from the, from the state and expansion is about 2.5 million dollars. We address that a little bit more as we get in here. That, of course, is broken down by fixed costs, as you can see in the blue, and new money requests, about 1.07 million for some projects we'd like to do and some expansion items. And what I will say, we'll get there, let's talk about fixed costs. All these numbers are based on the governor's budget. That's what, what we had to go on at the time when the Board of Education passed the budget. So these numbers are based on the governor's budget. I can tell you that actually the Senate version of the budget is about $475,000 less than what the Board of Education adopted a little over two weeks ago. So now, it's actually the fixed costs according to the Senate budget would be 1, 1 million, $2,000. If that makes sense, 1 million, $2,000. But this is what the Board of Education approved, that's why I'm presenting this. So if you want to put a note there, you can see that number's actually going to be a little bit less as far as where the Senate is. Now, we haven't seen the House budget, we don't have a final budget, but just so you know where the numbers are at this point. But we started off with a 5% increase in teacher salaries, 2% or $800 increase in classified employees, school-based administrators. We were, at that point, we were looking at a 5% increase. The retirement rate is looking at going up to about 17.33 in the governor's budget. That actually has gone up to, next year, I believe it's going to be 18% in the Senate budget. Health insurance has gone about $221 and these are based on the governor's budgets. And there's those numbers broken down on how much each of those would cost on the next slide. You can see $326,000, $327,000 for teachers and administrators. The classified staff, $676,000. Social Security, retirement, health insurance for about 1.47 million. And again, the, the number from the Senate is a little bit less, actually $475,000 less. So that, this would bring our operating budget, our local budget broken down as you see here, classroom teachers, 8.5%. Non-instructional support, 15%. School administrators, 4.5%. And school administration is actually assistant principals. That's, that's there and down the service, down the line there, you can see where the rest of that money is, is being spent. Of course, the bulk of it is on operations of our buildings, facility operations. Of course, local supplements come out of our local dollars as well. Also, the second to last item there talks about charter schools, how much money we spend, we push from our local budget to charter schools. I'll come back and talk about that completely. Just, just for your information, so you know what local employees we have, we have 19 local administrator assistant principals, 142 clerical, 54 teachers, and then our maintenance and technology department is 60 people. That, of course, is facilities and the, and the department, the team that keeps our computers running, our technology up and running. So that's 275 local employees that we have. So that's the fixed costs from the state. Moving on to new money requests, questions at that point? Or go through all of it first? New money requests, last year we started the process of, of working with our teacher supplements. We came to the, came to you as a board and talked about the, we wanted to go from, move all of our supplements over the next several years, get them to 6%. We started that process last year with your help. We moved our, our newer teachers are from 2 to 3%. Our teachers that are, are here, that have been, been here for a while from 5 to 5 and 1/4, which is where we are now. And we'd like to continue that process of moving our, our beginning teachers from 3 to 4 and our teachers, teachers that are on the supplement of 5 and 1/4 to 5 and 1/2. You can see the price breakdown there, plus our school administrator supplements are based on teacher supplements. Then we have some other initiatives. You know, we've started some programs within the city for specialized program and actually several schools welcome, trying to become a model STEM middle school, also a STEM-themed school at Eastern, the Global Wellness School at Elmhurst and the Theater School, a performing arts-type school at, at Walcoats. We're trying to create those opportunities here within the city. Those have been well received by the community, positive results of what we're hearing from those, about those schools. We also would like to expand our alternative schools. Currently, we run one alternative school with, basically it's, it's middle school kids in the morning and high school kids in the afternoon and we kind of bus them in and, and flip them in the middle of the day. What we're thinking, a better service to meet the needs of those kids is to use the Boys and Girls Center north of the river and on Fire Tower to have a middle school program and an elementary and a middle school program and a high school program, excuse me. That would allow these students six hours of instruction and involve the counseling services that we need to be giving for those kids to help, you know, try to get them back into school as quick as possible and hopefully let them finish in a traditional high school. The multi-tiered system of support is, you know, that's something we've been pushed, pushed on us by the state that we have to have in place and to do so takes a lot of professional development. You know, you go back probably seven or eight years now, if you've been listening to these budget requests, the professional development from the state has been cut out completely. We're not getting professional development from the state. We still have needs, obviously, as we're moving forward to meet the needs of the kids and meet the needs of the programs. And this is one that is, that multi-tiered system of support ties in with our PBIS. It's just a place where all of our schools need to be within another three years. This is what we figure is going to take us to get us there, you know, plus other PD and things, but that's the, the bulk of this is for that program. We also have the cybercrime insurance coverage, if I remember correctly. The county picked that up last year for us. That's 20, $20,000 and we saw what happened this past weekend, so it's probably $20,000 well-spent for us. So that is our new money request. I can break that down a little bit farther in a few of these items for you. Just so you, visually you can see, there's we, where we have been with our teacher supplements. There's where we are currently at the very bottom at 3% and 5 and 1/4. This is where County Commissioners asked for this last year, where all the other counties were and where most of our teachers, when they leave, where do they go? They go to counties around us and of course, Wake County gets the bulk of the teachers in the state, at least on the East Coast. So you can see where everybody is within this area. As we talked about last year, our goal was to get to 6% in a couple of years. We certainly hope that's something that'll support us on. You can see the chart there, that actually would take us to 6% in the year 2019, 2020, for all of our teachers to be at 6%. And the cost breakdown there for this year would be 375,000 for both, both of those, for the younger teachers and the more veteran teachers. $20,000 for the cybercrime insurance, I think that's been noted out there. Now, some other impacts to the budget, this is something that we started sharing in the last few years. I've been asked about charter schools, how does that affect our local budget? And you can see the charter schools and some other, other schools here we have, we'll talk about those. You can see Winterville Charter is expanding as well as Ignite is expanding from sixth grade, including seventh grade this year, I believe. So grand total, you have 1,170 students. I would like to point out that NERSBA, the second to the bottom school, the regional school, we have 60-some kids there, 61 kids, that is a partnership program, a regional school between us and four other school systems that work together on that program. NERSBA stands for the Northeast Regional School of Bioagriculture, biotechnology actually, excuse me. And the ECU Lab School is something we are partnering with ECU. It's here because it's just part of a, just another, another opportunity. But some funds from the state and local will be put into that program as well to help that program, that school be successful to meet the needs of those kids. And of course, ECU is, is promoting and bringing in lots of resources for those students in that school and not, not just the lab school, but the entire community of South Greenville. So there'd be a lot of opportunities there as well. So you can see we have a little over 24,500 students here in Pitt County. 23,400 or so, 23,400 are in Pitt County Schools. The charter school funding over the last several years, this includes NERSBA and ECU. You can see obviously 2015, 16 is when the local Winterville Charter opened up is why the big jump was there. Overall trend for Pitt County Schools ADM, last several years we've been 23,500, give or take 100 or so every year. Our fund balance, we've started about five years ago, you can see we're a little over 6 million. We're down to, ending last year, we were down to about 3 and 1/2. We're hoping this year to be about zero use of fund balance, that'll level off. That certainly can't continue that trend as you guys have heard this morning. That'll leave us right at 3.4 million at the end of this year, pretty close, we think. Be pretty close to that, 3.4 million dollar number. Just some other things that we're looking at and a little bit wary of. The federal government, if you've noticed, you've heard some things on Title I, all federal line items, Title I, Title II, different titles down the line. Feature quality, basic programs, or we're preparing our schools to take a 10% cut in federal programs going into next year, just to be, just to be ready. We're going to start the year ready, expecting a 10% cut going into the, the fall. So you can see, looking at losing about $950,000, $960,000 of federal dollars. So we're reorganizing our programs and reshifting and doing what we can to keep all of our people in place. You know, people are, education is a people-heavy business, obviously, so that's where we try to keep most of our, most of our money. County appropriations, or capital appropriations, excuse me. You know, last year you increased us from 750, where we've been for probably 15 or so years, to a million dollars. Can't thank you enough for that. Certainly appreciate that and obviously not going to ask for any more. We're, we're pleased with that money. Thank you very much. Just a quick capital project update on where we are with all of our lobs program. I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson to come up and talk about these, thank you, sir, these, these projects.
Good morning. We thought we'd take this opportunity to kind of update you, update you guys on where we are with our lobs, capital projects. All these projects we're going to talk about are, have currently been bid out, are in cost negotiation or in actual construction phases. These were all approved last year with our lobs one borrowing. The Chakot Phase Two project is on track to open in fall of 2018. Our roof installation is approximately 80% complete. Plumbing, electrical, mechanical, rough-in and installation is ongoing. We're approximately 50% complete with that. Site work is, is progressing very well. Part of this project was relocating the football and baseball fields out on the site. Those fields have been moved, they are ready to have sod put down on them. Renovation work in the existing 400, 500 and 600 wings will occur this summer. That's a lot of work to do over the summertime to have the existing school back ready for the students to come back in, but our contractors are ready and, and ready to go. You can see some of the pictures here of the interior work, a lot of stud work going on, rough-in work going on inside the building. Our Elmhurst multi-purpose room, the prefabricated metal building is on schedule to be delivered tomorrow to site. The restroom construction and utility work is ongoing, underground slabs. The slab has been placed for the actual gym area, so that's tracking well. We are on track to open for this coming fall. So students come back fall, we should have a brand-new multi-purpose room and gym for these guys. multi-purpose room and gym for these guys at Elmhurst. We're very excited about this project. The Lake Forest 8 Classroom Edition, the classrooms are almost complete. We actually did a walkthrough punch list yesterday with the contractor and the architect. Classrooms look really good. This is a great project, great addition to this school for the rising population that we do have out there. Our restroom modifications for the 200 and 300 wing will go on this summer, as well as the secure corridor at the front of the school. Other projects in bid work and negotiation are Belvoir restroom redesign and construction. The pricings are due back this afternoon, so we're hoping to get some good pricing for our contractors this afternoon, and kick this project off this summer to renovate the restrooms out at Belvoir. The CMF structural repair to the floor joists underneath that was awarded to Proshot Concrete, and they are going to start work on June 19th underneath the school at CMF. The transportation complex, we are in negotiations with the low-bid contractor. We actually did a design-build, so the design-build team, we are negotiating with them to get a final cost breakdown and get the lowest cost possible for the best facility we can get out at the Allen Road Complex in the Woodridge Corporate Park.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the, what does the contract look like with the car dealership who's bought the property that the present garage is owned, Transportation Center, and is there a time?
Yes, we are to be out of our current place by December of '18.
Okay.
So we've got a year and a half to get built and moved.
Okay, so there'll be no penalty until, if we're not out of there by December 2018?
Through the negotiation of the contract, we prepaid for three years of rent. If we're out by December of '19, we will receive a year back of our rental agreement. If we go beyond that, then we've already prepaid the rent and won't receive that money back.
So we're paying rent now to them?
It was all part of the, we're not physically paying. It was all part of the contract deal with the purchase and swap.
Okay, thank you. And you said 2019 then? Did you mean 2018?
December 2018.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Again, thank you for all you guys do for Pitt County Schools and the students of Pitt County. Do you have anything else you want to?
Afraid they will.
I'm afraid they will, too.
Questions for about the capital projects? I think they're moving along pretty well.
Scott, do you have anything that you want to add?
Jimmy, I have a question.
Were you ready for questions? He said, "Did we have any about the capital project?"
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Just for my information, how far in the future will the Chacod renovation additions that we're doing now, how far in the future will, do you think that might take us before we have to do some more building out there?
The whole, the whole project at Chacod was three phases. So Phase 2 gets us actual classroom space, media center, and gym. Phase 3 is a lot of finishing up in different site work areas. There's also an alternate building, or another classroom addition that can be an alternate for Phase 3, if the population out there seems to need additional space. With the, with the new classrooms and the current space we have out there, we'll probably, we'll have approximately 1,100 seats for students out there. We're a little over 900 population right now out at Chacod.
So, so how?
We're planning that this will last us a good bit of time with this new classroom building, and with Phase 3 coming up, if, if the population does start to have massive growth out there, there is the alternate in there for additional classrooms with the Phase 3 construction, which is, which will be part of, we're hoping to introduce it in part of our LOBS 2 as that comes along over the next couple of years.
So the Phase 3, is that already included in our capital funding? It is. Okay, fine. Okay.
You originally approved $25 million of additional borrowing for Pitt County Schools. We went out to market for 18 and 1/2 million, so still got the 6.5.
I know that that is a growing area, and we have, it would be interesting to know how much money we have spent on that complex with the sewer we got out there, plus all the additions. One more question about Chacod. The facade of the old building, is there any thoughts in trying to preserve that or parts of it?
A couple of thoughts. One thought is Phase 3, it gets, it gets torn down completely. Another thought is, is we leave it and preserve it in Phase 3, and then another thought, and again, all Phase 3, so we have time to develop all of these thoughts and get them vetted. But another thought is, is take some of the portions off and include them into some of the new construction. The Chacod with the date on the top over the front doors, maybe moving that around to the front of the new building and that type of thing. So some preservation, it's some things that we are looking at, yes, sir.
Will the preservation cost more than tearing it down and rebuilding?
There's a, there's a very good possibility that it will.
Okay, let's leave that subject. Next question. I have the same question on the Lake Forest. This current addition, how far in the future do we think that might take us? Because I know that's a growing area also.
That area's exploding very rapidly, and I hope to say it's going to get us five to 10 years, but with the way that area's growing, it's hard to predict right now.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That's all my capital questions.
All right, thank you very much. And Scott and Dwayne, would you all like to address some of the concerns in terms of appropriation that we're giving to the school compared to what they are requesting, so that we can kind of see?
Well, obviously, the recommendation is for 3/4 of a million dollars versus the 2.5 that was requested. I really leave that to Dr. Linker, is in terms of whether he thinks he can live within that appropriation or not. I mean, the recommendation is based upon available revenues within the existing tax rate, unless the board were to look to adjust that rate.
Okay, are there any questions? Started with Glenn.
I don't really have a question. I just have a comment. Thank you for your presentation and everything that our school board and our school administration does. The comment's really not about you guys at all. Just adding it up, locally, we fund 19 administrators and 54 teachers. That's a state responsibility. I am not suggesting we cut those. Maybe we send an invoice to the state, because they keep talking about their half-a-billion-dollar surplus that they have, but I would suggest, too, that that surplus comes from the continual push of state responsibilities down to local governments, and so they stay in Raleigh and say, "We cut taxes," or "We didn't raise taxes." Meanwhile, we're sitting here discussing whether or not we're going to have to do something with taxes, or cut deeper into the, the level of government that actually provides the service. And just some, just a quick calculation, if, and I know this, this isn't the average, but if you took all of those teachers and administrators and said the median, or the average amongst the 73 total employees that we pay for was $50,000, which I assume the administrators are making more than that, and some of the teachers are just below, but let's just pretend that's the median, that's $3.6 million that the local government is funding for a state responsibility. That is a massive amount of money, and almost covers what you're asking for, as far as the things you need to operate day-to-day, by the county picking up what is a 100% state responsibility. And I think that it needs to not go unsaid, and I think that we really need to focus on our legislators and let them know they need to pick up out of that surplus that they have, and start, instead of worrying about whether they're going to tax my oil change at a sales tax rate, and start talking about returning to their responsibilities, because we can't afford to keep shouldering what they're supposed to do. And I thank you guys for doing more with less, and working within the budgets, and being very cooperative with us. It's not your fault that we don't have the money, and we're in a position where we're going to have to look at how to get it, but I don't think we need to let these legislators off the hook, and we need to start calling them out on, while they may not do a state income tax increase, they are doing property tax, proxy tax increases by not fulfilling their responsibilities in Raleigh. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
Actually, I was going to hit that same subject, and Dr. Linker, what would be the net effect if all of a sudden, we didn't have the money to be able to give you to fund those 74-plus positions? How would that affect the school system? And, this is rhetorical, I'm not asking you to answer it, what would be the blowback to the, to the legislature for them? Because we're not the only county that has this problem. All 100 counties probably have it.
Correct. Just one, I would just say, if you look at, just the Assistant Principal Allotment, for example, the state, going back 10 years, my first was a superintendent, was funding assistant principals on about one for every 700 students you had in the school system. Now, it's almost 1,000. It's 996. So you take a school, like, and that's a 10-month assistant principal, not 12 months, 10 months. You take a school, like, we'll just say, South Central, or DH County, they're about the biggest, at 1,700 kids. You know, according to the state, you get 1.7 assistant principals to run a school like that. And those are big schools, you know, so that would be, there would be some blowback right there. There wouldn't be anybody to do half the job. That needs to happen.
What would happen to the class sizes? Wouldn't they increase significantly?
Well, if we cut out 54 teachers, and you start subtract that out.
And yet, I read about this all the time in the paper, about how they are passing legislation up there, that they want to see reduced class sizes.
Which is a great thing, right? It's hard to argue that reducing class sizes is great, but, and we need additional money for teachers, correct?
Yeah, that's the point. That's what Glenn's point is, too. Thank you.
I was looking at, I did put one little tick on my, and that was page 6, but I'm looking at the fact that if the county doesn't soon get into something as it relates to development, you're going to have empty schools in one spot, and overcrowded schools, and mobile homes, and everything else in another spot. At some point, there's got to be some impression as it relates to the building process in this county, because it's, we're going to pay one way or the other. And, and that's, that's, that's something that I think the county should at least look at seriously, because if you have Lake Forest, which is bursting out of the scenes, and then you have others who, where people are moving, you're going to have an empty building over there. So, and that would have been money wasted if we don't find some other use for it. So at some point in that, I see that the county has to have, must impress or have some impact on construction, other than just the school.
Thank you for this budget, and it's always, you know, important to see what really is going on, and I appreciate the update on the construction. I mean, we get that a little bit, but seeing it and hearing it, it was very good. I want to look on page 6 also. The number of teachers, 54, how many of those are actually classroom teachers that are either teaching a subject in high school or teaching a second grade?
They're all classroom teachers.
I know, but aren't some of them special ed teachers?
Oh, probably. They would be, they'd be first-year teachers.
I used to think, we used to hear that that number was more of teachers who were, you know, they were classroom teachers because they're taking, but they're not like a classroom full of second graders that they're teaching every day. And I think that's an important number, and I know we're required to have special education programs and those sort of things, and I know there have been opportunities where those teachers have gone into classrooms and helped those students, and that sort of thing. The other, but that, to me, is important. I don't think that, if, if that number is like it used to be, that it, they are not actual first-grade teachers, second-grade teachers, English teachers in high school. Does anybody know?
I can tell you, with our low-wealth dollars, we hire another 60 or so special education teachers outside. The difference being, you know, they're all, if they're a first-year or second-year teacher, that's where we use, you know, locally dollars, because they're actually, because they're cheaper. So that number can fluctuate, whether that's a, you know, it's an EC teacher, exceptional children's teacher, for the first six months, and maybe somebody moves, or we hire somebody new, and it, and it might be a second-grade teacher. But generally, with the low-wealth funds or local dollars, we're hiring, or paying for, anyway, the lowest.
Yeah, I realize that. We've always done that.
And we put it into a big allotment, say, "We've got 1,500 teachers." Then we divide that out over each school, so it's really kind of hard to say it just the way that is, but I know we hire about 170 extra teachers above and beyond what the state gives us.
Right, I understand. The other thing is the, this was an issue many moons ago when I first came on, the county commissioners, was the number of locally funded positions. And we were getting our allotment from the state that we should have been getting at that time, and there was a real push, and it happened. We had a major reduction, because the number was even higher than this. But I'd be interested in seeing how far we've crept back up since we went down to the lowest number of locally funded. I'm not saying that it shouldn't be done, but I'm just saying that it, it's a lot of money now. And the other thing is, we, we do and have hired, and I don't know what the source of the money is, I, I don't know the names of these teach, I forget, not the names of the teachers, but the position where a teacher comes in and works with new teachers, you know, helping them get started, you know, the first two or three years, or whatever, and they meet. And I don't know, is that money coming from the state? Are we getting it from federal government? Is it local? And, go ahead.
I'm assuming you're talking about our instructional coaches?
Yes, that, and...
The bulk of those are paid with Title I dollars or federal dollars, and then also some Title II dollars to, so we can cover all 35, 6 schools.
Right, but we do have a lot of those type of people now in the educational system. With that said, the, the report that was in the paper a while back, just a little bit back, about the graduation rates at our high schools, I think I was a little concerned as an educator, you know, with the percentages, and wonder, you know, about that, and I know y'all are doing everything you can do, but to be in the 80th percentile in, in some of these high schools that have not, I'm sure, been there before, I just, that is a concern of mine, with, with putting as much money and effort as we are, you know, into the system. So, thank you.
I want to thank you for your presentation. As you know, we, as county commissioners, continue to fund education as our number-one priority, and we are going to continue to increase that funding as the, as we have proposed to do this year. So again, thank you for what you're doing in your staff.
I think the point that Glenn and Tom made regarding the difference between what the local funding is versus what the state funding is is very well-taken, but from a historical standpoint, the reason the county got into the funding of education with locally money was this. Glenn, you're real on the point in working the General Assembly. That's where we need, we need to look at that surplus, but we have very little improvement with that, but we need to continue to work on it. But the reason that this board, years and years ago, began to fund local monies for teachers or whatever, was because the Boards of Education convinced this board that that was the way that we could enhance our school system, and I think the statistics will show you that it has enhanced. Whether it's to a million, or 2 million, or 3 million, that's another issue. But I want to thank you for continuing to bring that voice to us with your board and the presentation. But let me ask you a question about the supplement. This is just for my information.
Yes, sir.
Is the concept of supplements for recruitment, or is it for retention, or is it for rewards, or is it all of it? Can you give me a simple explanation of that?
I would say it's all of it. Yes, sir.
Good question.
Yes, sir. You know, we're competing with every school system around us in the state of North Carolina to get teachers. You know, there's, you know, finding teachers has become a task in sometimes, some subjects, and it's just hard to find teachers. So sometimes, we're hoping that by getting up to 6% over the several years, that'll help us recruit more teachers, keep them, let them stay here. We also, you know, the grant we received several years, several months ago, we use that to keep our teachers as well. We actually call that, you know, the retain, reward, recruit, you know, grant, just like you said. It's the same, same thing we do, just to try to keep them here in Pitt County. It's a whole lot easier to pay them a little bit more and keep them than to try to replace them.
You as an administrator, is it more important for retention or recruitment?
Well, if you retain them all, then you don't have to recruit as many, so...
But you want to retain the good ones.
Yes, ma'am.
And reward also.
And reward. And reward them as well.
Since, since it's gone for, and I noticed the comparison you put up of other counties, and of course, we all familiar with that. Let's say Wake County is ten percent or whatever the figure is, yours is five, three-quarters or six. And since you have gone from three to five, tell me what it has done to your, to your teaching.
To our teaching or our recruit, or?
Bringing in good teachers, which is.
Well, unfortunately during that same amount of time, the number of teachers has dropped immensely. So I don't know if I could say just by doing that, we brought in more teachers? I can't say that. If I could tell you.
One more question I've got. I uh, floating back into history again. Twenty years ago, I posed this question to uh, commissioners or to the school board or somebody. I said, why not have year-round schools? Why not have year-round classes? Thrown back to me, well, that's a state regulation, we can't do anything about it. Factually, a lot, that's not the point. But I think that we ought to take under view again, and I'm making another plea, to look at that and implement that if it's a necessity to better educate the children. First matter, you use your facilities year-round, I guess to do partially now, but not full-time.
Correct.
And uh, I, I'm, that's, that's a playmate of mine, so to speak. I've always felt that if we wanted to enhance our educational system, we'd try to use every resource. We're not using all our resources if we don't do it year-round. That's just a statement observation. Thank you for your uh, budget.
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, just some criticisms of your oral presentation. I enjoyed the fact that you only referred to your students as kids twice. I really appreciate that. But what I really found grating was your assistant addressing the board as you guys. I would submit we are ladies and gentlemen, and would prefer to be thought of that way. Thank you very much.
Uh, yes, thank you very much, Dr. Linka, for your presentation. I uh, appreciate your approach with this board. When you come before us, you give me the impression that you are very willing to cooperate with us, and that you fully understand that we do not have unlimited resources, and I really appreciate that. As far as my first point, my first point is what was made at the other end of the table here. So I'm not gonna repeat that, but I would emphasize that I think it is important that all county commissioner boards and all Board of Education boards throughout this state put the pressure on our legislators to do what they are supposed to do, so we can do what we're supposed to do. If we didn't have to pay that money for operation, operating cost, then we could build the Alice King Gym, and we could build some more additions to your schools that are needed. So we just need to keep the pressure on them uh, to do what they're supposed to do. Uh, the other uh, observation I had was on uh, and, and this is always a subject that comes up, and that is fund balance. And I see your trend there with your fund balance going down, and I know you don't like that. I don't like fund balances that go down either. But how does our fund balance compare with our peer counties? Are we way under, or about equal to, or higher than?
I'd have to do some research on that for you.
Okay, I was just wondering, because again,
Check that and find that for you?
Money that we always look at to help us through these uh, difficult times. Um, the other uh, question I had, and maybe, this may not be the environment to ask this question, but let me just throw it out there. One of the things that uh, always concerns me is these charter schools. And you've talked about charter schools here on page ten. The thing that really, really interests me is how they can operate with only the per-student funding from the state, and they can build new buildings and educate eleven hundred and seventy kids in Pitt County. How do they do that with such low public funding?
I'd say there's lots of uh, some of them have deeper pockets than probably Pitt County as a whole. You know, the one Winterfield Charter is actually run by a for-profit organization in Minnesota.
But the key is, it's a for-profit. So they're not putting money in there if they're not gonna make some money out of it. And again, the only public money they have is the per-student funding, as I understand.
Correct, correct.
So how do they do that? I, I, you know, I don't know, that's interesting to me.
Thank you. Uh, I uh, I'm concerned uh, with some of the same things the other commissioners said, and especially uh, Commissioner Garrus. Yeah, uh, with the charter school, uh, I often wondered about them, uh, too. How do they do what they do, and, and uh, we, the uh, public schools have such a problem uh, doing what they're supposed to do. I agree with uh, the other commissioners about uh, staying on Raleigh uh, with what they're supposed to do for public education, uh, so that the uh, local counties can do what they are supposed to do. Now, um, I was not aware that Chicade was such a growing, and that population was, was, was growing, so I was, I was not aware of that. But uh, uh, so that was new. I do have a question um, about the new money request. Uh, the uh, where you talk about the beginning teacher, teacher supplement, and the uh, and then you say all teachers supplement. So the beginning teachers, you're gonna move it from three to four percent. Now, that's for the new ones. Then you say all teachers, so do, so will the new teachers fall into that all teachers uh, bracket also?
Word that different. That would be your beginning teachers who are, who have not actually had to go through the evaluation process, and then you have the rest of the teachers for the most part. So you basically have two groups of teachers on the supplement side.
Okay, so, all right, so I just, my, my question really is, do they get two, two things?
No, ma'am.
You know, okay. Thank you uh, for your presentation, Tim.
Okay, thank you very much, Glenn.
Thank you, Chairman, appreciate it, thank you.
I, I, I want to bring up something. Out-of-school suspension. I know you expected me to say something about it. In, in the request for the out-of-school suspension report, oh, it was an alarming report that I received. And, and in addition to that, uh, public information is public information, and the amount of time that it takes to get it, and the response of your staff, I was amazed at that as well. Um, if a child is out-of-school suspended, he is not learning positive uh, society activity. He is rewarded for doing something that is not approved by the school, to go home and do more. And I'm wondering that is, how much of the direct relationship of your out-of-school suspension aligns with juvenile crime, and how much it aligns with uh, the downward trend of the learning curve for our students? I, I, if I had all that, I could come up with something that would satisfy me. So what I'm saying is, if you look at your out-of-school suspension by school, by rate, and, and, and by class even, I think it would help you make some decisions as it relate to who's good teachers.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
May I have uh, Dr. Dennis Massey, take the manager of college, come forth?
There needs to be some parental control, really.
You done great.
Well, it'll be a penalty for them when they don't, when the kids don't do.
If they look at it, they can know. If they look at it, they at least know who, who can send it. They don't look at it. If they look at it, they can do. You gotta look at it and study it to come up with reasons. You know, rude.
Well, good morning.
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 Uh, it's a pleasure to talk with you again, uh, Chairman McLaughlin. Uh, thank you for coming to the graduations.
Yes, sir.
Really appreciate your presence there, representing the county commissioners. Uh, Ms. Huggins, look forward to having you on our campus and uh, sharing more about what Pitt Community College is about, the benefits we provide for our area. All board members, it's a pleasure to talk with you again, and uh, I'll be as brief as I can. Uh, I will say that this is a time of celebration for us. Uh, we just had graduation last week. Uh, not only on Wednesday night, we graduated, uh, well, we, we basically distributed fourteen hundred student degrees and diplomas. We had seven hundred going through the ceremony itself, uh, and those were both records for us. So we're seeing more productivity of our campus in terms of benefit to the local residents, and benefit to the uh, to the entire uh, economy. Uh, and that's what I think is really driving a lot of the increase of Pitt Community College. Actually, overall, we're not expanding. What we're seeing is more students go part-time, uh, and go take a job and go to school part-time. We are seeing an increase in our continuing education or non-credit programming. Uh, but all, all the things that's driving our increase is the uh, is the desire for people to get that union card, that certification, that degree, and that's something we've been preaching and pushing on, supporting students for many years now. Uh, I do wanna also say this is, even though it's a time of celebration. Oh, and, and we had another graduation, I don't know if you knew, on, on Thursday night. We graduated about a hundred students with high school equivalency, adult high school, and what they used to call GED. Uh, that was at the convention center. Uh, that's always a raucous and uh, really uplifting experience, and to see those students, many of them are older. Uh, some of them are fairly standard age in terms of high school population, but to see the accomplishments that they have and the celebration that their families show. And we know, of course, just as Superintendent Lenker does, that when they complete that high school degree, that makes a big difference for their earning power in the future, and the pride with which they can share their experience with their family and their friends. Now, this is also a time when we're contending with the state budget, and Dr. Lenker mentioned that in his remarks. Uh, the Senate has come out with its budget, and it's not very rosy for us. Uh, it's not very rosy for many of the entities. Uh, Mr. Webb, you talked about the state's responsibilities, and uh, you know, they, they are shifting more of the expenses to other sectors. And it's kinda difficult right now where the federal government is gearing up to cut back uh, in certain areas. And then the state does the same thing, and it's pushing it all down, and it's gonna get worse before it gets better, I'm afraid. But I'm, I'm hopeful that we can contend and we can continue the, the quality of programs that we've had. Uh, and in terms of size, I'll, I'll mention to you that um, we are now the sixth-largest community college in the state. We passed Winston-Salem, Forsyth Tech. Uh, and when you think of these, the cities that are much larger than Greenville and Pitt County, and what we're doing to serve our region, and you know, part of it is, good part of it is Pitt County, but some of it is our, our area, just as people outside of Pitt County come and work in Pitt County, uh, we have people that come and go to school here. Uh, but we're now the sixth-largest, and I'm proud to say that we are probably one of the most productive in terms of degrees and certifications. Uh, that said, we are actually among all fifty-eight community colleges in the lower quarter of colleges in terms of the amount that the county provides uh, for Pitt Community College, based on our student enrollment. And I only say that because I don't think we, we included in our information for you the rank, specific rank. It's about forty-two or something like that, yeah, out of fifty-eight. But that, that's a challenge for us to maintain the quality. And, and you know that the bulk of what you provide for us is not for teachers, it's not for administrators, it's for the maintenance staff, it's for the public safety officers, and it's for the capital expenses. And I had Kimberly just uh, forward to you this summary uh, item that we sent to the, the county on where our new request money is coming from. And I don't have a slide on that, so I wanted to go ahead and share that with you first. We requested seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in this new budget. And uh, the county manager's budget provides a little over a hundred thousand. Uh, the bulk of that increase is in capital expenses. And it's, it's in basically taking care of the buildings that have been here for twenty and thirty years, although, and forty in some cases, although there is some work for the Redrick Building, which opened the year that I came in two thousand and three, so that's about fifteen years old. Uh, but you can see that most of the rest of the expenses we can handle as part of what the county manager's proposal shared. So I thank you for, for what you're doing for Pitt Community College, and I thank the county manager for recognizing that the salary increase, oh, there, the salary increase is not a supplement, really. It's simply, if the state provides, let's say, we put three percent, not knowing what they might give, the Senate actually has proposed a one-and-a-half percent increase for our state employees. Uh, if they give a one-and-a-half, or if they've give a two, we try to give that same level of increase to the folks that are supported, those maintenance workers, those uh, public safety people who are supported by county funds. Uh, so that's where that forty-one thousand comes from. We are requesting a new police officer, and then we're also putting in something about an inflationary request of about twenty-one thousand dollars. So I just wanted to point out that the bulk of, of the new expenses that we are proposing is for capital basi- basically fixing up and, and upgrading the buildings that we have. Okay, uh, let's see. Yes, uh, you know, this is just a slide of some of our faculty and staff. We're always training them, and this was a Leadership Institute program. Uh, and as I said, really, uh, the funding that we request from you doesn't affect any of these people unless, I don't think any of these are maintenance workers or public safety people uh, in this particular photo, but you know, it is uh, to support those, that segment of our population. And I said, there is a public safety officer, new position that's requested. Uh, the reason we're, we're needing that is we're providing and trying to develop more programs evening and weekend. We, we run, we don't run a twenty-four-seven operation, but we do uh, operate until quite late in the evening, and then uh, during, on Saturdays, and so we have to have public safety presence when we do that. And, and that's the main reason why we would request consideration for a new public safety officer. I just wanted to give you a quick upgrade on the Farmville Center. Uh, if you haven't been by the Farmville Center, I invite you. Uh, it's been a great functioning facility. This looks a little deceptive, but you can see the front door on the, on the left. Uh, that's the old Bank of America building there on Main Street in Farmville. And we use it as a, as a multi-purpose facility. We have some regular credit students who are going there. We have a number of Farmville Central classes that are offered over there. And we do a lot of continuing education, training for the community, as well as training for business and industry. Uh, you know, that's probably our, our main focus in Farmville, is serving the needs of Mestec Alliance One, and the other employers who are trying to upgrade the skills and retain the employees that they have. The Greenville Center, uh, you remember, this is the facility that we purchased, you helped us purchase uh, several years ago, and we use primarily for continuing education. Uh, this facility is down on Memorial, kind of near Parker's Barbecue, and it's served us very well to have this kinda separate, not too far from the main campus facility. And we did move the public safety, the law enforcement training program. And we did move the public safety, the law enforcement training program, from this facility to the Champions, former Champions Fitness Center on the other side of Sam's Club, nearer to campus. But this Greenville Center is an extremely important place for us, and we do a lot of programming there. Part of what we're requesting in our budget is a new roof for this building. It is showing its age and needing to get attended to, and so that is one segment of our new money proposal. The next part is about locking systems and public safety, and I'd like Vice President Rick Owens, VP for Administrative Services, to speak to this. Strohens?
Thank you for bringing me up to talk. After the capital improvement meeting, I talked to Commissioner Webb a little bit about some of the grants that are available. We have been pursuing those. A lot of attention was paid to campus security shortly after Virginia Tech. A lot of those grants have dried up. Those were mainly for residential campuses. The commuter campuses just hadn't received the attention that we have. The issue that we face is we're a porous campus. I don't have a better way to phrase it. The campus was built starting back in the '60s. It was built with an open campus model, lots of doors, lots of access. One of the things I wanted to point out with the locks, the lock on the left is actually one of the original locks that was put in when the Vernon White Building was built in the early '60s. It's key access only. To lock that door, you actually have to go in and use the key. If we have an active shooter on campus, that means, what we advise, what we train our faculty, what we train our staff to do, is don't lock that door, barricade it, throw furniture in front of it, something like that. So, we're slowly but surely trying to replace that. The lock on the right in that presentation is an Intellic key. That's one of the newer locks. What we're moving to is a system that actually has a thumb bolt on it. ADA requires that you be able to leave a room if it's locked with one motion. So, you have to be able to hit that door handle and pull it open in case there's something going on in the room. So, but we have about 800 locks on campus that have to be addressed. So, that's one of the things we're looking at. The $150,000 that was in that SIP request was actually Phase 1. That's in some of the buildings that we've identified, like the Vernon White Building. We've done, when we've gone through and renovated some of those spaces, we've replaced those locks, but there's still quite a few of those. Some of the locks in the buildings are older than I am. I mean, they just, they need to be updated, they need to be replaced, so we can provide that. And we're doing the most dense areas also. Offices are not getting as much attention as classrooms are. We're trying to focus on student safety, those issues. So, that's one of the things we're looking at. The Leslie Building was completed in '93. We've tried to keep that building up. It's been home to quite a few programs that have come in and out. Transitional Studies was there, Transitional Studies was out, CompEd was in, CompEd was out, it's come back in. As those programs come in and out, equipment gets installed, equipment gets removed. We've tried our best to keep up with that, but there is roughly $100,000, $120,000 worth of repairs that we need to do in that building just to keep it fully operational. Again, we understand the state of the budget, but there's not a whole lot of maintenance money, grant money available. And it's just fallen, we're trying to keep that building from falling in, falling by the wayside. The mechanical system replacements and upgrades, this one I wanted to throw in, Dr. Massey mentioned the Redrick Building. The chiller on that building is reaching its lifespan. It's about 15, 16, 17 years is about the life expectancy of a chiller. That was one of the major maintenance requests that we have in there. We'll keep that one going as long as possible. It doesn't have to be replaced, it's functional, but if it dies, we'll put in an emergency request with you guys, and we'll have to hit fund balance or something like that to replace it if we can't do it. Preventive maintenance, these are actually shots from the mechanical systems in the new Science Building that we have going up. So, you see the huge amount of chilled water, the cold water piping that comes in and out. These things just require some routine maintenance and upgrades. And then also trying to move to more automated. So, one of the things that we had talked to you about last year that we had been asked about was the performance funding, that can we go out and get somebody to come in and do some of these upgrades for us on kind of a loan basis? What we found is our energy utilization is so low that it doesn't pay for a company to come in and do that. So, we're continuing to try. We've got a couple of buildings that have the old pneumatic controls, so we're trying to replace some of those, and we'll, that was one of the requests in there for those upgrades, for the mechanical system upgrades, so we can do the remote monitoring and stuff like that. So, if a building is down, right now, we do it just a little bit more manual to shut buildings down over the weekends and stuff like that, but we're working on it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Strohens. I may get you back up here if I've got any questions I can't handle. I do that occasionally, you know, ask a little help. Clifton Everett Building is our library. It's right there on the front row, right next to Vernon White Building. We're in the midst of a renovation project with that, and that's actually how we're using $2 million of the state bond money, the Connect NC Bond. But we're also using some funds provided by Pitt County. Thank you, Mr. Elliott. And we are challenged, of course, like all construction and renovation projects right now, by costs. The bids come in, and they're not as good as they used to be, but we've, we're being creative, and we're confident that we can move forward with this and really create a space that's much more student-friendly and more modern, because right now, it is not that way at all. Early college high school, I mentioned about earlier before we got started about my cooperation with public schools, and they have been great to work with us on the early college high school. We now have 150 students in that facility. Well, they're not all in this facility. You know, most of them are taking classes on campus with our regular credit students. We also are devoting several classrooms, right now, three classrooms in the Russell Building, to their teaching, and that number is growing by 75 students for next fall. This coming fall, they'll have 225 students. They'll be, continue to grow by 75 students until they reach a maximum now of 375 students on campus. They're a tremendous addition to the campus, not only in terms of the brightness and the performance that they have in the classroom, but they're very active in activities. You see them as cheerleaders, you see them in clubs. They are, they're just a really choir. They've got a great choir that they help with, and we have a good working relationship with the principal, Mr. Whittington, and the whole staff. We're in the process of planning for an additional modular unit to be put next to this one. These are temporary moves, though, because as you know, we, our real hope is that we can create a new eight-classroom early college high school facility next to the Science Building. The first round of bids came in too high, so we had to drop back, re-engineer that program, and it will be, it's going out to bid, and we'll find out about that in a couple weeks. So, we're hopeful that we will be able to move forward with that plan, but we had to create something that we could use for next year. And with the high percentage of students who are on free or reduced lunch, most of these students have to eat on campus as well as take their classes on campus, and so that's the main reason for the new modular unit, which is coming in shortly. We're making preparations for that now. I thought I would conclude with a few slides about our new Science Building. This, just to refresh your memory, is an 80,000-square-foot facility that will be the largest building on campus. It's a little bit behind schedule, but still slated to finish by the end of this month, or early June. We're hoping for a ribbon cutting in July, and definitely full utilization starting with the fall term in August. The facility is really great. This is a shot from the back. You can see, this is quite a cloudy day, wasn't it? You can, this is kind of near the back end of the Warren Drive that's kind of near that lake or pond at the back, retention pond. The building to the left here is the back of the Russell Building. This is just a little bit of an aerial view. I think this was taken through a drone, wasn't it? We've, we've got, we've got people, Dan Mayar, Dean of Public Services and Fine Arts, is really into drones and has a group that works with NC State, actually, on kind of a drone program that we have, through a criminal justice program, actually. Just a couple interior shots. They're still working a lot on the inside, so I can't show you a whole lot, but I look forward to inviting you to the ribbon cutting and to showing the entire facility to you. I warn you, you're going to have to wear your walking shoes, because it's a lot, it's a big one, but it's really going to be a tremendous asset for the campus. And a lot of these early college high school students will be taking classes because their emphasis is on science, technology, engineering, and math. Okay, that's my entire presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Dr. Massey, do we have any questions for Dr. Massey?
Yes, sir.
The Farmville Center?
Yes.
How many students do you have there?
You know, we don't really have full-time students there. They're taking a class occasionally, but we have quite a bit of activity, and that's expanding. We have students who are starting classes there and then eventually moving to the main campus, and then we have some adult high school or GED-type classes. It's a real variety, and that's not the only place we're offering classes in Farmville. We continue to work through the Farmville Housing Authority and at the high school itself. By the way, we're starting a welding program at Farmville Central this year. This is mainly our third. We now run welding at North Pitt and at Aiden Griffin High School.
The early college program?
Yes.
As I have shared with you previously, I think that's a great program. It gives some kids an opportunity to get some college credit that otherwise probably would not have that opportunity, so I appreciate that program. The new building, that is included in the current funding, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
You mean the maintenance, the support for that building?
I mean, the new building. You're going to build a new building for that early college program, right?
Oh, yeah. Well, that's, it's planned, it's not in the current funding.
It is not in the current funding?
The Science Technology Building is early college high school, but it's not that big of a building, so the magnitude's not going to be that tremendous.
Right. What's the square footage for that building?
About 15,000 square feet. Are you, are you saying the construction cost or the?
I'm saying the construction cost.
The construction cost.
Right, the GeoBond, remember, if you recall, the GeoBond funds came in in excess, and we did make the decision to utilize those funds on the construction of early college.
Okay, so the funding for that new building is already included. That's what I thought. Thank you very much.
But it's coming in so much higher is the part, right, that we've gone back to the drawing board?
Sure. And you should know that the public schools is putting up part of that expenses.
Correct.
They're putting up about $800,000. We're putting up 2.2 or 3, something like that. So, I mean, 2.2 million. And where this money is coming from is the savings from the Science Building, basically.
But they are, they are still considered high school students, so the public school still gets the per-student allocation?
They do, and I thought it was quite interesting, the slide on where public money is being directed, you know, the charter schools and Bear Grass, who would have known? But we don't get any of that funding for the, for the early college high school. It's a different animal. We get state funding for only the classes that they take that are college classes, but they start taking college classes their first year, and by their third year, they're taking mostly college classes. But one other thing, we, I mentioned 225 early college high school students this fall. We have over 600 high school students that are taking classes at Pitt in addition to that number, from all the different high schools and from the private schools, too. They're not taking full-time, but they're taking one, two classes. And we interviewed a young lady who's going to Covenant School, actually, now, and she's getting her high school diploma, and she wanted to be the graduation speaker. She got beat out by another person in the interview, but, but we have people that are actually getting their associate degree the same time as their high school diploma, which is remarkable.
That makes sense.
And most of the research shows that that's, that's a tremendous boost to their future.
First, I have a question. Are you going to go around or are you just asking anybody?
Just asking, asking. I'll get you next.
First, I enjoyed your graduation ceremony.
Thank you, Mr. Strohens.
And I noticed in the bulletin, you had degrees and diplomas in deferment. Maybe I ought to know, what is the distinction in a diploma and degree?
Well, there's really three categories. There's degrees, diplomas, and certificates. The diploma is normally a program that's about a year program, and they're specified usually by the profession that they're getting it in, like welding or maybe a health sciences field. So, it's short of a degree. The certificate can be even shorter than that and usually is tied to a particular skill. And we're getting a lot of people that come in and take welding certificate, and then they go get a job right away. They're not going to wait to get even a diploma, let alone a degree, because they can make money.
All right, now, the leaflet that you passed out to us, salaries here, a million, $64,000, how many people does that pay?
Do you know offhand, Ricky? How many people are supported by the salaries?
It's a designation item number two, salary's a million, $64,000. I just wondered how many people that employ.
22. No, I kind of take the insurance and divide it by the insurance over here.
Seven sworn police officers in our public safety force.
So, that's all just?
And then the county, it's the other, the maintenance staff, which is another 13-ish employees, somewhere in there? I could get you a firm count, somewhere around 20.
No, no, I'm just being picky, that's all I'm doing. My next question to Dr. Massey is this, maybe somebody else would want to know that. Maybe I'm the only one picky, but what's the criteria for salary increase of 3%? How do you, how did you arrive at that 3%?
It's a guess, Mr. Strohens. We had to try to guess what the state would do in terms of providing a salary increase for state employees, and we'd rather guess on the high side than the low side. As I said, the Senate came out with a 1.5% increase. The, and we don't have steps, so people serve an extra year, they don't get an automatic boost up, so that's the only salary increase they get. But we think now it might be 2%, so we would not need quite as much as what's on this list.
To be a little more specific, as an administrator, if you employ a thousand people, to give annual increases, is there a criteria for that, whether it's one, two, three, four, five?
I'm not.
Is that a guess, too?
Yeah, I'm not in control of that. We parallel the state system pretty much. If the state says they're going to give out a 2% increase, we give out a 2%. Now, occasionally, we will have a little extra that we'll give if it works out that way, and sometimes, you know, the state is saying you can't, you have to give a merit increase, or you have to give a bonus, you know, not a, not a continuing amount. So, we're really a creature of what the state decides.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Strohens?
You have on this handout, page two, new police officer, insurance of $470. That's for one person, right? That's how I magically came up with that number a while ago, I divided it into 114,000. But my question is this. Scott, why is our insurance for the county being rated at somewhere as a cost, when it comes out with the W-2 forms and stuff, as $94,000, $9600? Why is there such a difference? Where do you get your insurance from? Who's it through? Maybe we ought to be looking at that, because that $4,000 times 1,000 employees in the county, that comes out to $4 million. Why is it only $5,400, but it's $94,000, $95,000, $9600 for the county?
It's actually $7,512 would be, now, if you're getting supplemental coverage, it may then include that as well, if you're spouse or family, it could include those additional dollars on top, but ours is $626 a month.
Okay, then I'm wrong. Let's say it's a $2,000 saving, it's only $2 million. Why do we pay $2,000? Why do we pay $2,000 more for insurance than what they're paying? Where, where are they getting theirs? I know where we get ours, but where, where are they getting theirs?
Well, to say what we're paying for insurance, it's a little bit of apples to oranges, because we, we're self-insured.
I understand that.
Right, so we're actually paying ourselves. When we, when we allocate the 6, $626 per employee, we're actually paying it into our own fund. I would assume that they actually have an actual group insurance plan that's through the state, and theirs is through the state pool.
But then from budgeting purposes, regardless, why is it still $2,000 more? I understand that.
Our plan is richer.
So that's still $2 million. You've got roughly 1,000 employees, right?
Yeah, a little less than 1,000.
1,000 times 2,000, that comes out to $2 million.
The state insurance plan, I believe, is 70% coverage, ours is 90. I think you'll, if you compare the, the coverages, ours is a much richer plan than the state's.
I'd like to see that compared, direct comparison, just for information's sake. Thank you.
Again, we're, we're a creature of what the state provides.
Well, I understand, but I, I'm looking at this and saying, whoa, why are we so much Maybe we shouldn't be self-insured.
Dr. Massey, we appreciate certainly a fine job that you're doing over at Pitt Community College in leading your, this effort. But, you know, there's a, a lot of new jobs and, and technical jobs that's coming into the area. Now, how are we staying above the curve in preparing for the recruitment and training of these new jobs with these various industries that have technical training?
I think we're number one. You know, we, we actually recorded one of the highest in terms of labor market outcomes, people that go through our program and their increase of salary after they finish. But give you a couple examples. Pharmaceutical, I mean, the big news is Patheon sold to another company, a bigger company, which might not be bad, but we're just starting this new solid dosage training academy in the old tech center, shirt factory. I think we're gonna be a model for not just North Carolina, but for other states in how we're training those people at Maine Pharma and at, what's it? I forget the name of the new company, but it's Patheon, basically. The health sciences, the reason we're as big as we are in health sciences is because we offer a lot of different modalities in health, health field, and all of those are keyed to national certifications, and so, you know, we, we have to follow what the national standards are in those areas. And then the trades, the building trades, those, we've, we've been a leader in that area. It shifts, you know, like lately, they've been talking they need masons, they need more people in masonry. Well, we had a masonry program, and we phased it out because it wasn't really in demand. So building construction is built back up, welding is booming, so I think, I think we're doing a pretty, we could always improve, but I think we're doing okay in terms of our preparation of people for the local labor force.
Yes, sir.
And in addition to that is, we have two members of his staff on our Development Commission Board, so we work very closely with trying to see what our industry is going to need, and then tie that in with Pitt Community, and they are very on the spot to providing that training.
Ernest Lee and Dr. Tom Gould.
Yes, yes. Very good, very good. Thank you very much, Dr.
Thank you.
Massey. Scott?
I've got two things real quick.
Yes, sir.
On the presentation from this morning, a question was asked of how many employees are using the Employee Health Clinic? We've got numbers that if we, as we look at last year, 12-month period, 200 employees per month actually utilize the health clinics. That's a good percentage. And also, we do have one error in the presentation, and that's on the, for the health plan where we said that the qualified employee was gonna raise from 20 to 40, it's only raising 20 to 30. The unqualified employee is raised from 56 to 76, that is correct. So it's $10 less than what I.
And that's on, that's on page 21 in the binder.
And the health, healthcare clinic that you have here, what services do, do the employees receive there?
Gosh, I mean, it's.
Outpatient doctor visits.
Yeah.
Accidents, prescriptions, any, any kind of minor outpatient doctor visits. No, no dental.
So preventive, preventive care, blood pressures check?
Yes, sir. Preventive.
Blue shots, prescriptions, I mean, there's, there's an actual doctor on, there as well as a nurse practitioner, nurses.
All, any, basically any primary, primary physician services that you would receive from your primary doctor.
From your regular doctor.
So it costs the employees no money?
$10.
It does, $10, yes, sir.
Okay.
Which is very different.
Right, half that a pack of costs if they went to their regular primary care.
The, the reason I asked that is because the city just opened a, a clinic, health clinic, and I think they are charging, they're, they aren't charging employees anything, are they?
Correct. I, I don't believe there's any cost to them out of pocket.
I don't think it's a cost to them, yeah. Right, excuse me.
Now, I was just gonna say that I think the city has less employees to deal with than we do, but this has been going on for how long?
Gosh, we used to have an employee health clinic here on campus in the Pats Building to begin with, or actually, it was in elections, but we've been using.
And then we moved because it's gotten.
We were with Biden and their employee clinic that moved, and we switched over here through the Greenville Healthcare.
Express Care.
Express Care. It's probably been there five years.
And what that means, as far as my understanding is, when you go to see your regular doctor, your insurance goes with you, and you get, you know, your insurance gets used for that, and when they go there, they pay $10 and get the same care. And they, those doctors will refer them if there is anything major that has to be done, just like your regular doctor will. I think it's a great thing, and I'm glad to hear that the numbers are as high as they are.
One thing we, we try to stress indirectly with workforce is that really the, the clinic is not meant to be your primary doctor for everything you get. It's really supposed to be, if you've got a cold, or, or allergies, or something, you just need to go and be seen immediately. It's really not meant to take off work and go on work time just for any and every little thing. But we don't really have a way to control that, but we do try to stress that.
The one that Melvin referring to, that's staffed by Biden, isn't it? That's in conjunction with the city?
I, I think.
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah. The, any, any other comments that you want to make to us before we?
No, sir, I was gonna tell you tomorrow, you've got, gosh.
Sheriff.
Yeah, you've got the sheriff. You have emergency management and animal services, all beginning at 8:30. And if the board would consider just recessing until tomorrow, you won't have to have a motion for adjournment.
Okay. Is there no other question? We, we'd like to consider this as a recess until tomorrow morning at 8:30.